Everybody's talking with everybody. That works. Get anybody's attention? All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I guess first step, we start with our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're not as packed tonight as it could have been. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We had a closed session earlier this evening. Conference with Real Property Negotiator and Public Employment, both of the subjects this are related to, are on this agenda later on tonight, so you'll hear all about them then. How's that? So, roll call will show that everybody's here. And so, we have an agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve this agenda?
Second.
Okay. Motion wins off second bragman. All in favor?
Aye.
And as I said, there was no close, well, yeah, we, you'll hear about the closed session afterwards. Meeting protocol. Mayor, maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM and ascertain which items will be heard that evening and which, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to adjourned or regular council meeting unless council votes to suspend this rule. Please turn off all cellular phones or put them in silent mode. There's a number of announcements coming up. Fairfax food pantry, which is always great, needs volunteers. It doesn't say on here, especially volunteers during cleanup time, which is about 10:30, 11:00. The food pantry is open Saturdays, 9 to 11, at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. There are two vacancies on the volunteer board for full three-year terms. We have one interview later on this meeting for that. There is a vacancy on the Fairfax Youth Commission for a Ross Valley youth, somewhere between 14 and 19 years of age. That's anybody in the Ross Valley, and if you know somebody, please tell them. Vacancy for a youth commissioner to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission for a two-year term. And there is a planning commission vacancy effective February 28, 2012. That's last year, for a full four-year term. And also, in this room next, this coming, no, it's next Friday night, the 18th, there is a, going to be a showing of a film called Gasland, which is about fracking and the dangers thereof, sponsored by Sustainable Fairfax and a bunch of other people whose stickers are on the bottom of this poster. And it's in this room. I'm sorry?
It is sponsored by us.
Yeah, it is sponsored by us, yes. Okay. And so, this is very informative film, and it's pretty good. Please come and see it if you haven't already. And we have first on the agenda, an annual report from the Fairfax Open Circle Arts and Sports Focus by Ann Manis, program director.
This stays on. Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you all for having me, and I'm excited to present the Focus programs and what we've been up to. My name is Ann Manis, and I'm the program director, and I share the duties with Camille Esposito, who's our creative director. So, I know many of you know Camille. Camille primarily works on the graphic design for the program, as well as she's very involved with the Holiday Craft Fair. My part-time position, I work around 15, 20 hours a week, and my main position is to grow the program and enhance the programming and have more activities happening at the pavilion. So, tonight, I'm going to show you a little bit more about what's going on with that. So, the goal of this presentation is to increase visibility for Focus, provide an updated report on what we've been up to, and also to consider an increase to the Youth Fund for the Future ballot initiative, which I think is coming up in 2014 or 2015. I don't know when that's happening, but hopefully, we can consider it. Okay, on to growth. So, you all may know that in 2011, we split from the San Anselmo Recreation Department, and so now, all the money that is coming in for the programs that we run stays within the town of Fairfax. So, this has really helped with the growth. And so, I just want to, I broke down a little bit of what happened in 2011 and 2012, and then sort of projected what would be coming in for this year. So, in 2011, 2012, we profited about $9,000. And for 2012, 2013 projections, I have about $18,000 for profit. So, that's about approximately roughly $10,000 in profit growth for the program. And I think that is primarily, well, one of the reasons is because of the split, and also because of the increased administrative capacity that's been happening and our increased class offerings. So, right now, Focus receives about $18,000 a year from Measure I, the Youth Fund. And the additional monies that come in to run the program come from revenue, so that's supplemental, and it includes the fee for services, the pavilion rental, and the fundraising that we do. So, now, I'm going to kind of jump into showcasing what our programs are. And you all have probably seen around town our charming little catalogs that we have. And if you haven't, I encourage you to pick one up. This one is probably the most full that we've had since we've made the switch. So, Fairfax Moms, this is a great program that is now in kind of full launch. It used to be the New Moms Club and, or the New Moms Group, and it only met once a week, but now, it has a full website with a menu of services that can help new moms as they're transitioning into motherhood. So, this now has a $30 annual membership fee before it was free. Our very popular community music class is held right here on Mondays with Renee Goddard, and that's a very popular packed class. And we just recently increased the drop-in fee, and that also is helping with our revenue. Okay. And our Fairfax flagship program, the Pavilion Playgroup, continues to have high attendance. It's bustling with activity during the week, and we also just increased that a little bit. We have ceramics for our school-aged youth and adults with Shoshana Perry, so that also has a loyal following of about four or five youth that come and take some classes up in the artist pavilion, and we've expanded that to an adult series that is happening in the evenings. Spanish for toddlers and Spanish art for school-aged youth, this is a new offerings that we've offered to the community, and that started in the fall, and it's had a great response. We have about 10 or 12 participants that come to the Spanish toddler group, and the Spanish art has a following of about four or five youth that come from the various elementary Not shown, I didn't have a lot of pictures because they're new programs, but this is also very exciting. We haven't had a lot of teenage programs, so on Fridays, we're starting a drop-in basketball for teenagers on Friday nights. The Fairfax Theater Company has youth theater classes happening on Fridays, and we're starting a Zumba series on Tuesday. And what else do I have? There's a fun women's drop-in basketball happening during the week. So, I'm happy to report that the pavilion is packed. There's very busy. And I'll move on to the next slide, which kind of talks about the pavilion rentals. So, another revenue stream that happens is with the birthday party packages, those happen on the weekends, and during these cold months, it gets very busy. The other popular Kung-Fu program that we have up there also brings in a nice revenue for us, and the projected revenue for that is $12,000 for this year. And our next one is Camp Fairfax, and that is a beloved program here in the town. You probably all see them with their Camp Fairfax t-shirts on. And that program is very lucrative. The revenue on that is $18,000, usually in the last two years anyways. And in 2011, we made around $9,000, and in 2012, around $7,000. And the discrepancy for that is because this past summer, we increased the hourly wages for the staff, so we thought that was a worthy cause. And here are some fun pictures of our youth. Okay. And so, last but not least, we have some fundraising efforts that we implement, and one of those is the Holiday Craft Fair, which we share with Sustainable Fairfax. So, we split a 50-50 profit on the income that comes in with that. We hosted a Give Back Tuesday night with Iron Springs this year. I don't know exactly what that brought in, but I'm estimating, because it was a huge crowd if you were there that night. And then, Marin Saniteri gave us 500 this year, and the Ross Valley Rotary Club also has in the past awarded us $1,000. So, those are very appreciated. And so, now for considerations. So, as I mentioned before, the Focus program receives 18K from the Youth Fund, and we share part of this with the Youth Commission, and that fluctuates year to year. Sometimes, there's very little that we share with. But the increase to a Youth Fund for Focus would be a consideration for the future, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here to present. So, I'm hoping in the future, if we do have some kind of way that we can increase the fund for Focus, it would greatly help with the programming and administrative capacity to grow. And just a little bit more note on that, right now, we're running on a very grassroots level, which is wonderful, but all of our catalogs, we kind of hand-make and fold and staple. So, just little things like that. We don't have a full database of our participants. Just a little more support in that way, could I, I think, could help reach and grow the program even more. So, we're growing slowly, and I'm excited to be part of it, and thank you. We have question and answer if you want.
So, if you're getting 18 now, what do you want?
I was going to put that up there, but I thought I'd kind of leave that open. I would suggest a $10,000 increase. So, instead of $18,000, a $28,000 allocation.
Mayor? Go ahead. So, very nice presentation.
Thank you.
How many, how many kids are involved? Do you have any idea just the number of kids that you're serving?
That's, yeah, that's part of the administrative capacity to collect those numbers, but I mean, I, we collect attendance sheets for many of the classes that we hold, so there's kind of a running count. I think on our mailing list, our e-letter list, which basically is people who have either expressed interest in Focus or have actually come to our programs, that list, we have about 400 on that list. So, there's 400 families or people or either who have come in contact with us or have used our program in some way. But of course, we'd like to increase that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking ahead, if we do want to try to boost up the revenue, the next time that tax measure is run, it'll be 10 years since we first passed that tax. Hasn't been raised in 10 years, and it was, it's going to be helpful to have the data on the number of kids, the ages. So, that information could actually not only, it could help you in any number of ways.
Right.
So, you know, I'd be very interested in taking a look at that, if we could put that together at some point, so.
Okay. Great, I will.
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
Great presentation.
Thanks.
One of my favorite aspects of this job is getting the annual reports, because, you know, a lot of us know a little bit about things, but it's the annual report that puts the bookends on really what's going on, and it allows us to better inform other people of what's happening. As the council member that deals with the Youth Commission, I've got some other ideas I think we should probably sit down and talk about. Obviously, we don't try to cut into the budget for the $18,000, even though we can, because we know that that goes for some good things. But coming forward, I think that it's probably a good idea for us as a Youth Commission and you as the Focus group to all get down and have a meeting from the leadership perspective of, what are the average ages of the people that you are dealing with here?
Yeah. I think for a long time, it's been that zero to school age. Most of it's toddlers, most of it's the school-age Camp Fairfax range.
School age being the fifth grade?
Elementary school.
Sixth grade?
Yeah.
Fifth grade?
Yeah. And once it kind of hits sixth grade, it tapers off. But we are having this team basketball program on Friday, so it's like the first time I've kind of been able to kind of get something to happen with that.
Seeing as though they're both connected, it may be possible to graduate some of those people into the Youth Commission and bringing the Youth Commission into the Focus group as a leadership group to learn how to do that, kind of bringing people together and bringing up new, you know, we're always looking for new people to join and be a part of this. And so, that may be something that we, and what time is the Friday night basketball, and is that only open to kids?
It's open, it's, yeah, it's at 6 o'clock on Fridays. And the man running it, his name is Byron, and I'm sure he'd be happy to talk to anyone about.
Nice. And do they, do people who show up, like, bring a dollar for rental to the gym, or is it just open?
No, there's a preregistration price and a drop-in price, so.
Do you know what that is?
Yeah. I think the drop-in is $10 drop-in, and then if they get an eight-week session is $70, or something like that.
And how long does the basketball program go?
It's eight weeks.
I'm talking evening times, 9 to 6, or 6 to 9 p.m.
Oh, six to eight-ish.
So, two hours?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So, we'll be in touch. I got a lot of great ideas.
That'd be great. Yeah.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Yep, thanks.
Pam?
I just want to say, say thanks. It's been really fun to watch this program grow, working closely with Camille in kind of the earlier days, and it's just very sweet to see how well-rounded it has become and how much the community has embraced it. So, thank you.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
I just wanted to tell you thank you, too. And I just wanted to point out to the council that Ann and Camille have grown this program, and it's, it's almost self-supporting now, which is very exciting and something we wanted in Park and Rec. We wanted to use our buildings more, they're doing that. We wanted to expand it to more ages, they're doing that. I was pleased to see so many enrollments come in for this teenage basketball, you know, that's great. And we haven't had a lot of teen programs, but I think with Ryan helping a little too, but they've been trying to expand the ages, and it's just like you said, Pam, watching it grow has been very exciting, and Ann and Camille work beautifully together, and it just is a fun thing to watch. Now, Camp Fairfax, you could probably tell us, how many kids were in Camp Fairfax this time?
Yeah, Camp Fairfax, there's about 25 that happen each week, so, and it happens over four weeks, so 100 definitely participate.
So, that's a, you know, that's a nice base right there for them to come and to come back the next year and have their younger children, you know, the younger children in the family come back. But I'm excited about the program for teens and the basketball and expanding it to little older kids all the time. And the pavilion, the other program that you didn't tout too much is this birthday program, where people at a reasonable rate can rent the pavilion for a child's birthday party. And I know when our guy was little, his birthday's in January, and what do you do? And a lot of people with winter birthdays for their children are using the pavilion at a reasonable cost. So, when Ann says we're using the pavilion a lot now, it's exciting that we're using the pavilion. You know, it's been, it's dormant, it's been just sitting up there, and now, we're going to do the, this retrofit, and it's, you know, it's really exciting stuff. So, hats off to you, Ann, for all your work.
Oh, thank you.
It's great.
Thanks. Thanks again.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's been exciting to watch it grow, and at this rate, you're going to, hopefully not outgrow the pavilion too soon, but.
Exactly. Okay, thanks so much.
You got some space there, so thank you very much. Did we have public comment on this item?
Yeah, I just got a question. I was wondering if I could ask a question, or should I come up?
Yeah. Please.
My question is just, I'm just thinking, I love all the presentation tonight, and I was, I'm really excited to hear about the basketball, and I'm wondering if there's a way to sum that money from the council vote for its biggest scholarship program for kids who, like, I know some teens who really could use that, and they could have $10. I know they didn't, you know, a lot of times, their parents are using that at all. I'm just wondering if that just, it's for you to think about, or like.
Yeah. I guess I'll comment on that. Yeah, building a scholarship program would be a great next step. We do offer some scholarships for Camp Fairfax, and we also do, Kung-Fu also has some available. But one thing that we've found is not, people haven't been coming up, so we need to kind of make that more available, more known, that these kind of things are open to everyone, and if you don't, there's a sliding scale, and that we would work with you, of course. So, yeah, great, great idea, though. Thank you.
Great. That's all? Well, thank you very much, then. And so, yeah, thanks very much, and I think that we'll hear more about this as time goes by, and probably see it in the media a bit more, too, and let people know about it. So, now, we have time for open, open time for public expression. There's a three-minute limit per person. The timer is broken right there, but I have a modern technology timer here that I can hold up three fingers when it gets to three minutes, and please, yeah, try to keep it to three minutes or five minutes if you're representing a group. This is the time set aside for individuals wishing to address the council on matters that are not listed on the agenda. State law provides the councils not permitted to take action and strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any un-adjourned item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So.
Okay. Hi, Valerie Hood, representing Fairfax tomorrow. I guess I could have five minutes if I wanted it, but I don't want it. I'm hoping to come and renew the film series that I started last year, that you guys gave me permission to do, and I've been working on reaching out to other groups to help cosponsor, which gets the word out a lot better. And so, these are films that I'm looking at that have local and national consequences and, together, so, and maybe have some discussions after the films. And my committed cosponsors right now are the new Marin Grange, if you haven't heard of it. It's a, like, a farm support group, and GMO Free Marin has offered to and Sustainable Fairfax. So, we have our little fivesome here so far. And I'll be working with Main Street Moms on the fracking film this time. They have a really good speaker. They have an event in West Marin in February. I'm going to find out about perhaps getting their speaker, and I told them about the new fracking update, that's called Pink Cloud, that Josh Fox has done. If you haven't seen it, you can watch it online, and I could send that link to you. Let's see, I have confirmed dates now through May, and just make, you guys will, you can see that. If you want me to say what they are, I can tell you now. Would that be helpful, or does it matter?
Sure.
Okay. Well, it's 1/18, 2/15, 3/22, 4/26, 5/24. They're all Fridays towards the end, if I could get them towards the end of the month. They said that was a good day for you guys. And let's see. Oh, I think I mentioned that I'm going to try to get speakers to help with the discussions afterwards, and I'll be asking for donations again, and we'll, like last year, split proceeds between the town and the filmmakers. And maybe we'll have light refreshments, like, you know, tea and coffee, maybe cookies, something like that. That's about it. Maybe popcorn, if I'm feeling real motivated.
You can borrow.
Questions?
Questions?
No?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Valerie, could you share the dates with me?
Oh, sure.
At some point, and.
Yeah.
Maybe we could put it on the consent calendar as a sponsorship, so we, you know, if you want the waiver fees or whatever.
Okay, yeah. I gave them all to Susan, I'll give them to you again.
Okay.
She put it, she penciled them in there, 1/18.
Okay.
2/15, 3/22, 4/26, and 5/24.
Okay. And these have already been, we've already waived the fees on these? I don't remember that.
Yeah, from last year. I, as long, I think you guys are still, yeah, okay.
All right. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Stephen Franks. I live at 19 Willow Avenue, Fairfax, and I have a few questions. Jim, I was interested in, I would like to know if Good Earth has asked for any changes in its current use permit concerning deliveries, and would like to know the dates for the final permit issued. I believe it was coming up in February, but I'd just like to know what the final date is. I am asking that the 60-foot semi truck or any other truck not be allowed to deliver before 6:00 a.m., and no backup beepers till 9:00 a.m. The use permit was somewhat intended to see what works before granting a final permit. A 60-foot semi at 5:00 a.m. does not belong in our neighborhood, and I will gather signatures, if needed, to document that, to prove that it's not, shouldn't be allowed in our neighborhood at 5:00 a.m. It's a huge truck. To this date, and to this, to this date, Good Earth has been given more than enough time to comply with their permit and chosen not to, as documented through myself and the police department again. I am once again asking the council to make a decision on this matter and not to let Good Earth do as they wish. I am more than happy to answer any questions.
Except one, a couple of months ago, you were here.
Right.
And you went outside, I remember it was the end of the meeting, and you were having that proverbial kumbaya moment with one of the owners.
Yep.
Are you telling me that it has not resulted in a, you know, to.
They are not complying to their current use permit still, after I was promised by the owner of Good Earth that they would change. And they, they have purchased a small sign that says no backup beepers, which is, the permit still allows them to use backup beepers, so they're not breaking any rules when they have that backup beeper at 5:00 a.m. with a 60-foot truck. They're still getting deliveries there with more than the amount of trucks that are allowed on the permit. I have documentation of that. They are also, before 5:00 a.m., getting deliveries, and 4:30 a.m., I have documentation of that. 4:15, the truck's showing up. By the time I get dressed, go down there and take pictures, it's 4:30 when the officers arrive. So, yes, they are still not following, which you said exactly, they're good people. I don't deny that. They might be great people, but they are not following what permit has been put in place, and nobody's backing up that permit. All I can do is document it. I've wasted a lot of the police officer's time. I apologize for that, but it's something that I have to present to you guys, documentation. So, I'm kind of, my hands are tied. I try not to call them.
Right.
I just wanted to, because my, this is now on the agenda, so we just got to.
Hearing about it, and you can ask.
You can ask clarifying questions, but you shouldn't be discussing it, and then, you can on first ask who was planning the installation of the pavilion there. And then, if you want it, you're not due to, except, I believe.
All right. Ryan, did you have a clarifying question?
I do. Jim, when is the review of their certificate of occupancy?
We're waiting for their occupancy permit.
To adjournize them.
Their.
Thank you.
The renewal of their agenda? I mean, the renewal of their, I mean.
They have a temporary occupancy permit.
Right.
That expires on February 10.
Okay.
We are not in receipt of their application for the modifications to the plans that were made during construction.
So, am I to take a. So am I to take it as correct that they have to resubmit something to you before February 10th?
The goal was to review their modifications prior to the temporary occupancy permit lapsing. It looks like, given the fact we have not received a complete application yet, that we will not be able to put them on the planning commission agenda for February.
And what happens if they're not on that agenda to their permit?
We will be discussing this with you.
Okay. And then the other question is, is if they do get this on, and into you at a certain time, can we make sure that this item is definitely part of that agenda?
I beg your pardon?
Can we make sure that this topic is discussed during that, as making sure that this is...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And staff has some ideas on how to hopefully address this ongoing unfortunate situation.
Great. So back to you. You, you say you're documenting what you're viewing?
Right. For nine, nine months, I've been down there quite a bit, taking a lot of pictures, and as of our last meeting in November 7th, I was kind of told that they would behave themselves, and I gave them approximately a month, six weeks roughly, and realized that the noises weren't going away, the trucks were still coming. So I pulled it back up, gave the officers a call, went down there, documented, took more pictures, and I've kind of chosen not to, I wake up every morning, you know, early now, before the alarm goes off, but I don't get out of bed anymore, because it's really disturbed my sleeping habits.
Okay, if I may to continue.
Yeah.
And Chief, are you actually, if he makes a call to the police department, the police department obviously logs in the call, and do you actually log in the results of what you're seeing, or is it just noted in the record that he's making a complaint?
Unless the caller specifically says they don't want us to respond to something, we would just log it. These calls are not occurring that way. So if Mr. Franks or someone else calls, we actually respond, and we document our observations. So if the call says they're delivering, the officer will go out, investigate, and the documentation will either be, there were no trucks there, yes, there was a truck, but there was no unloading, or yes, we observed unloading.
So...
So I can run a report, if needed, and provide it to Jim of whatever date you want.
Whatever date.
And give you whatever data we have.
So if you're seeing the information, and you're calling the police department, the police department is logging the information, and we should be able, at that point, to ascertain what's going on?
And that is a big challenge, because when there's, I, what I try to do is wait for three trucks to get there, then I call up. If one leaves, which they do, because they're coming and going, the officer can't stay there for one hour, at from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. He comes in, he's in and out within four, four minutes, roughly. We've got a pretty good time lap down. We don't even have to talk anymore. We just wave, he drives through, boom, boom, boom. It's done.
Okay.
So it's hard to get a clear view, except for on my camera. When the officer leaves, I stay there for another 20, 30 minutes, take more pictures, and boom.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Larry.
There we go, sorry. Split too many hairs with you, but do you observe that there's staff from the Good Earth unloading, or are these trucks waiting to get unloaded and idling?
But it's, it's over...
Push the button.
It's a combination of both. Some of, what the owners have done is directed some of the trucks to the west side of the store, so they are bringing in deliveries through the front door, facing the, this west side, and then there's also trucks in the back, on the loading dock. So they're kind of splitting it up a little bit, so it would appear to be that one truck's delivering between four, five and six o'clock, when actually there's several trucks scattered around.
Okay, but, but, you know, my distinction is, are they, are they sitting there, idling, waiting to get unloaded?
No, no, they are, they are wheeling.
There are employees actually unloading...
Yeah.
Prior to the seven o'clock.
Oh, absolutely. Six, 5:00 a.m. is when they're allowed. Five to six is the 160-foot semi, which I'm saying does not belong there. They are unloading that truck with, with crew in the back, on the loading dock, into the store, which creates a huge amount of noise with a giant lift gate slamming down and so forth.
Right, right, right.
If that answers your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, well, we're well over the three-minute limit, so...
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much, Chris, too. I appreciate your time.
Yeah. Is it Son? Yvette Wakefield, 51 Berry Trail? Boy, I sympathize, because I hate those beeps, they're everywhere. If you go to cross the street, you know, you press the button, it's beep, beep, beep. You go to the ATM, now you go to get gas, it's that beep, beep, constantly, everywhere. Drives me crazy. So there are a few things I want to ask your help with. I learned a new word recently, corporatism. So I'm really out to defeat corporatism. That's my new goal in life. And something I've spoken to you about before is these light bulbs, these little squiggly light bulbs that have mercury in them, that are a public health hazard, that have to be disposed of as hazardous waste, and I doubt very much that very many people know that, and pretty soon you won't be able to buy the old-fashioned light bulbs. So I've asked you before, I want to ask you again, to please pass a moratorium on the sale of these light bulbs in Fairfax, so, and have an education program, so people can become aware of the dangers of them, if they want to use them in their houses. The other thing I want you to work on is the geoengineering problem. There's more, and more information coming out about plans to use this supposedly in the future to combat global warming, but we all know that they are using it now, and it's really an abomination. And I have to look at it every morning. Now, I live up on the hill, so I have a view of all the hills, and the sky, and everything, and it's just awful to watch it. The other thing is all this wireless going on. We should really try to put a stop to this. This is hurting people, and there's no end in sight. They want every single thing in the world to be wireless now, and now they want to do away with school books even, and have little children in elementary school use those electronic tablet things instead of books. And also, I would like to see if Fairfax could do some type of educational program for the public about gun violence, about the real horror of it, and about the dangers of glamorizing this violence in our, in the popular culture that we have. I think it's time to really do something about that, because it's not going to end on its own, and I don't want Homeland Security brought in on this at all, or anyone like that. So I'd appreciate it if you guys could work on this. If you're not going to do anything about the light bulbs, I'm going to gather signatures and start, you know, so then you'll have to have a meeting on that topic, and the public will be here to comment. Thank you.
Yvette, I like where it's coming from, but a lot of times, people are saying, man, we really shouldn't have these, all this wasted paper in school books, and so they give you a device that saves thousands of trees, and then they say, gosh, these light bulbs that we're using waste a tremendous amount of energy, so they invent a light bulb that saves hundreds of thousands of dollars in energy usage. And then they, people say, well, I don't like these telephone poles, all these wires are everywhere, so now we make wireless. So although I am in agreeance with your cause, and I do appreciate having a cause, there's always another side, and things are being created in most, in most places to try to combat a lot of the things that you're talking about, and a lot of these, the progress made in saving paper, and we're trying to get, you know, wireless stuff, so that I don't have cases and cases of trees.
They're all lies. They're all lies that are made up to sell these ideas to you.
Fair enough.
These, these things are hurting people.
Fair enough.
And there are other ways to be sustainable without wasting...
I agree with you, and I'm, and I'm actually applauding your efforts. I'm just making sure that we're all on the same page, that we get told that saving energy and saving trees, and now we get a solution, and now the solution's not, not good.
Solution shouldn't kill us. Their solution to problems about their identity and terrorists is to bomb the world.
I'm not here to debate it with you. What I'm trying to say is that, you know, we're trying to do the good things, and environmentally speaking, people are making good strides to try to do good, good things.
Yeah, I've been studying this for a long time now. They're all lies, Ryan, I can assure you.
Okay, let's keep it there.
Lou Caro, 21 Olima Road. I just heard her comment on the mercury vapor light bulbs, and they've been actually, I haven't used those in years and years and years. I don't ever think they ever used them in a household. They were mainly used on street lighting and, and lighting on buildings where they light up a parking lot or something, but I think she better check up on that. I never heard of a mercury vapor light bulb being used in a residence. And speaking about streetlights, I was a lighting rep with PG&E for about, oh, eight years, and before I retired, we replaced all the lights in Marin County, starting in Novato and working all the way to Sausalito. I guess you're probably not aware of that, but it was a new group replacement program that the PG&E was doing because of the fact that these lights, the street lighting, the light bulbs are only good for usually four years, and after the fifth year, they start going out one at a time. We had a couple of crews that went out, one-man crew that went out and replaced lights, and so after I retired, we finished this group replacement program, and they laid off, they're streetlight people, and they didn't care, you know, because, what's his name, the director of the Smart Train? What's his...
Our document, sir.
Huh? Yeah. He, he just got a job with the county, and he got the bright idea that it would be a great idea if they formed a joint powers agreement and had all the cities own all their own streetlights. Of course, I retired. It went to court, and I think Judge Smith said, I think he let the, the county buy all the streetlights for $4 million. The, the PG&E had assessed them at about $8 million, and he let them have it for $4 million. So that's how you guys in Fairfax and all the rest of the cities are now owning all the streetlights. And of course, when you own the streetlights, you're getting a small, a lower rate, see? But now you have the maintenance problem. So I've been kind of, after I retired, a couple of years after I retired, I got to talk with some of the town staff, and I, I audited the streetlights in Fairfax, and I had every bill for every month. And at that time, the town was paying Republic Electric $600 a month for 12 months, plus they had to pay for any additional. And I audited all those streetlights and all those bills, and I found that Republic was kind of, I hate to use the word screwing, but they were sort of, you know, they weren't too honest about replacing all these lights. They were charging the city, when they'd replace a light, they would charge them for replacing the photocell on top, which wasn't necessary. Our guys, when they did it, they just replaced the bulb, but the $600 included just replacing the bulb, but they would replace the photocell. And it would also charge the city for replacing the circuit breaker inside, which our guys, very solemn, had to replace a circuit breaker. But the town had no way, not only in Fairfax, but the rest of the towns, they don't know anything about that, so they just go ahead and pay the bills. So after I got through with the audit, found that they paid actually $7,000 more a year for the streetlights, which is not too much for a city like Fairfax, but it's $7,000. And they paid $7,000 more per year than they did when they were paying PG&E, just for the flat rate that they were paying, and then PG&E was doing all the maintenance. So now, anything that goes on with Fairfax, you know, you guys got to pay, and so it might be a good idea if maybe you looked into it, and I think now that you have a lift truck for Public Works, I think that those people could probably do their own work and replace the bulbs, and you might find that you're going to be saving a lot of money. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. One thing that has happened in the downtown area of Fairfax is we've replaced the lights with LEDs, use a lot less energy, and they're actually a little brighter, and they last significantly longer than those. So that's kind of the way technology is moving, and they don't have mercury in them either, so just...
Members of the council, town staff, and fellow citizens, my name is Chris Lang. I live on Canyon Road. Since we're on the subject of streetlights, this is a fairly important issue for me. The light standards that were installed in the Center Boulevard redo are too high. It was a mistake, and Mr. Vicaro caught that mistake before it was executed, but it went ahead anyway. And the reason I'm mentioning this is because those light standards cut into the skylight view as you come into Fairfax on Sir Francis Drake, between Willow and Broadway. You look to your left, and there's this iconic ridge line with the trees there that was the Wildwood logo, right? It's just this beautiful ridge line, it's almost wilderness-looking, you know? It's at Pine Mountain and Mount Tam right there, but now there's these two big metal things sticking up right in the way.
Mr. Lang, I totally agree with you, and I think there's a lot more to how that went down than this current council, but I, but I think that you have a very valid point, and I think that that's something we should try to work on to bring that view line back.
Thank you. So not seeing any more public lined up for the public comment, I'm going to close the public comment period, so thank you very much. Now we have interview and appointment of candidates for the volunteer board, full, full three-year term, and the, our one applicant, I do not see...
John, I don't see Helen here.
In the audience, yeah.
She knew about the meeting? She said she could make it to the meeting, I don't know. She's a returning person, so...
Well, ordinarily, if somebody is sitting on a board and they don't show up for their interview, the re-up...
She also has an injury, too, I think.
Yeah.
So...
I would entertain a motion...
I, I'm comfortable moving approval of her reappointment.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion, Bragman, second, O'Neil, is there any public comment on this? Okay. Hall in favor?
Aye.
I guess they're unanimous, and, and next time I see Helen, I'll congratulate her on that. And now we have council reports and comments. These are brief announcements and reports by council members, assignments to various committees and activities, including reports for meetings attended at town expense. And, left, yeah, David first?
Yeah, I usually start. You know, usually the, the months are full, but of course, with the holidays, we tend not to have as, as much extracurricular activity. But two things I do just want to mention. First of all, I want to thank the chief and his staff. Took a little holiday, signed up for a service that all Fairfaxans should take advantage of, which is that when you leave town, if you fill a simple form out, the police will come by your house five times and make an observation, note the officer who did it. Chief, I said this last year, thank you. It's an extraordinary program, and, and just another public service by a great police service, so thank you. And the other, just to alert the council, I applied for and received a presidential appointment to the California League of Cities to serve on their environmental quality policy committee, which meets a couple of times every year, and so along with Pat Eklund and another council member up in Sonoma County, I'll be journeying up for legislative conversations, and I'll bring back whatever news is relevant to Fairfax.
I attended, I think, most of the council, the chamber, and holiday parties, and any other things I can add to the matter. So it's the last meeting, I was attending a number of those sessions, and there'll be meetings regarding the taxpayer of the county.
Larry?
Yeah, the holidays were pretty, pretty quiet, as far as public agency meetings were concerned. I do think we had a Marin Energy Authority meeting. The California Public Utilities Commission, I believe, has made some adjustment on what's called the PCIA charge, which is sort of, it's a charge that PG&E negotiated with the California Public Utilities Commission, which essentially is a tariff on Marin Energy Authority customers to pay PG&E for energy contracts that it will no longer be directing towards Marin County. And according to PG&E, PG&E's had a banner year selling this electricity, so... And according to PG&E, PG&E's had a banner year selling this electricity, so we disputed the fact that PG&E was actually taking any kind of financial loss on these contracts, and the PUC listened, and that charge is going to be reduced, which means that Marin Energy Authority customers will actually be paying less than PG&E customers. So when it comes time for you all to take an inventory on what you can do to actually reduce carbon, Marin Energy Authority is the one thing you can do that really does have an impact, and cumulatively, it has a huge impact. And I'm talking as someone who was somewhat skeptical of the whole idea when it first sort of evolved, but I do think it's actually a viable idea, and it's actually working and saving carbon and helping to cool the planet. The other thing I actually participated in was CUPC again had public hearings throughout the state about smart meters. And Fairfax is actually not alone in trying to get some control over the deployment of the smart meter program. A lot of communities in Southern California, Central California, Santa Barbara have problems with it. I participated in a public hearing up in Santa Rosa a few weeks ago where the administrative law judge took testimony. There was over 200 people who gave testimony to the PUC about that. We will be filing our brief before the California Public Utilities Commission, I believe, either tomorrow or Monday. And there are some real, I think, interesting and innovative ideas that we've come up with to actually make opting out viable and practical for Fairfax and other communities. So we can discuss that further when we file that brief, so that's it.
Thank you. Ryan?
I wanted to take this time to kind of a deja vu moment here. We almost had another near-flood kind of scare. And I know we had this mentioned at our last meeting, but again, it got to the point where I went down to the town hall, and the fire chief had already, you know, been in place, the police chief, were on top of this scenario. And again, citizens clearing drains all over town, and we're prepared, but we all have to make sure we remain diligent in that fact. And even though it wasn't at the same scare level as it was the month before, there was a tremendous amount of rain that came down right approximately on Christmas and kept coming. And there were problems, but there were some problems down by Rock Ridge. And I asked if they needed help, and by the time I had actually parked and gone back, the four other people came out and helped clear the drains. The water went down, they didn't even need our town services to clear it. So congratulations to the citizens for doing their part to help it and make it not be a big deal. And when we're all kind of cozying in our beds, there is a lot of people behind the scenes that really are working to make sure that those aren't huge, huge problems. I attended a major crimes task force oversight committee meeting this week, or last week, where they came out with an annual report and a evidence audit for 2012 for three years. The mayor of Novato, Pat Eklund, and I plan to talk to people at the next MCCMC meeting as to where this is going, the importance. And I believe the sheriff and some of the task force are going to plan to come to the meetings as opposed to speaking at an MCCMC meeting so that they can come in and give us a little one-on-one with why the task force is important, what they're doing, and what their plans are, as opposed to trying to have a presentation at an MCCMC meeting where it can be a little bit talked over. So they want to make sure that they come, so that's the plan on that.
Well, thanks, Ryan. Let me see. I also, holiday stuff, I went to the chamber party and volunteers dinner, too, and many meetings, interviews with our new town manager and also some other people that didn't make it. Met with the general plan implementation committee, who has some interesting stuff on their plate, and we'll be hearing more from them. And also met with the several different people about the bike spine. I should probably update people on that. We're looking at trying to find some money to do some road repair or patching here and there before the bike spine pathway indications go in. But it looks like, well, we're hopefully going to find the money here and there to do the patches we need to. There's one section that needs a lot more work than we had expected, and that's the section down here of Park. But that is still in the pipeline. I also wanted to mention, and something that I forgot to last month, in that I wanted to thank Jim Moore for all the work that he did in getting us the grant for the Parkade, because that was $300,000 that the town got in a grant, and there was a lot of work by a lot of people, but I forgot to mention Jim's involvement. Now we have, Judy, do you have a report? Okay. All right, so that brings us to the consent calendar. Is there...
Mayor?
Any comments from our council?
Yeah, just a couple. Number three, Tony, I don't know how you do it. You take great minutes. I just have just a few changes, and I'll provide those to you separately. I want to pull number seven, and Judy, can you speak for a moment to number eight? I noticed that there's a low bid, but I also noticed that just a few thousand dollars more, there was a low Fairfax bid. And do we offer, or are we allowed under state law to offer any prioritization or any benefits, or I'm searching for the word here, for local contractors? Without passing on the great quality of the low bidder, seems fine, but here we had a Fairfax bidder, and a preference would be the word I'm searching for. Because I was concerned that here we had the opportunity to keep the money in town. Well, I'm sure the low bidder will spend the money wisely. Certainly, the Fairfax bidder lives in town and would be spending that money in our stores, our restaurants, et cetera.
I don't think we have anything in our code that allows us to do that, but, you know, we do have discretion as to who we award the bid to. Traditionally, it's the lowest qualified bidder.
I'm wondering if...
So I don't, you know, I don't know if, I defer to you, Jim.
I mean, I don't know the factual situation. Is this a public contract code contract, or is it an informal process?
It's an informal.
Then that's our own rules would apply. I don't know if we have a rule on it. I think if you're going to have a preference like that, you would want to state it in the bid document. If you don't have anything in there, it's probably not a good idea to come up with a new criteria.
This one, this ship has sailed, as they say. And it would be unfair to all the folks who complied, but I would ask staff to consider coming back with a proposal, because we should give preference to our local folks.
Ryan?
Oh, yeah, just pull number seven. I agree with part of what David said about local folks, but I disagree, David. If you want to make changes to the minutes, I think that's going to have to be in order for respect to the public, the council, and the people that that, just to avoid an open time issue with someone else coming in, that it's probably better just to put it out here now, and so that someone doesn't have to challenge it or listen to it later.
Yeah, very, very briefly. It was during the, it was the minutes reflecting the presentation of the audit, and in the third full paragraph, it said, "Council member Winesoff asked Ms. Wen if she was satisfied", and it says, "was satisfied that they were meeting the highest standards." And what I believe I was saying was, if she was satisfied that we, the town, were meeting the highest standards with regard to how we, not they, manage the community's money. That was the correction. Okay, thank you.
I was actually hoping we could pull number eight, because I have some concerns about the tree that was listed, and I didn't get a chance to hear back from Shelby on it, so I'm hoping to do it tonight, so we could pull that until after.
Okay. So moving items seven and eight off of the consent calendar, do I hear a motion to approve items three through six?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we, and is there any public comment on any of this?
Tony, you just said before, it's terrace Fairfax. This comment is on what you guys had talked about, what you did over the holidays, and my question was around the PUC and the operation of smart meters that are already underway in our town. I just want to know what our position is that they still are operating antennas, cellphone antennas, in order to operate their system, and how do we, as a council, I mean, as a town, deal with the fact that they're not, what do you call it, in accordance with our ordinance?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm told is those aren't powered up yet, so that, there they are, there they remain. We have not done an abatement, notice of abatement to them, because we figured that that would be sort of starting up a hornet's nest of legal complications. I will say, just going back to what I was talking about, that currently PG&E has programs called, there's a program called average billing or steady billing, where they don't read your, they come and read your meter maybe once every four months. There's another program where you have like a little plastic card that you can put out, and they just, you know, drive by very quickly. They only read the meter every six months. So what we're trying to illustrate to the PUC right now is that there are programs in place, very low-tech programs that are already approved by the PUC, that we could use very inexpensively, very efficiently, instead of smart meters. And a lot of the data that they say they really need, they can get from the block transmitters or the hubs that are here in Fairfax without going to individual meters. So I can't really answer your question more than that, so that's kind of where it's at.
Ryan?
Quick question. Judy, is there a way that we can actually find out if these things are active? I mean, I know from an electrician's standpoint, it's pretty easy to come up and put a device on something. Is that something that we need to consider doing?
I think we've asked them. So, you know...
From a trust-but-verify standpoint, I'm thinking this is a very easy way to find out, and let's maybe put this to rest before we have an issue.
We can probably do that.
I know a guy. I mean, there are ways, I mean, there's a matter of it being powered, like, there's actually electricity running to it, and I believe that is exactly what's happening, because that's mainly the saw that you run electricity. The real question is whether it's sending out a signal. And I hearsay says that a guy tested one in Fairfax, and he deemed that there was a signal coming out of it. And I think he checked it, he might have, he wants to be disclosed at this point, but I can certainly see if he can actually get, I asked for proof of that reading, I asked for him to, at the time, it was at Michael Rock, I asked for him to talk to Michael and go show that it was actually happening, and he never followed through on it, so I don't know whether...
Sorry to interrupt. This is not on the agenda. You should not be deliberating on this.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve consent without seven and eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously. So I guess next on the agenda, we should take up number seven here, which is authorization to solicit informal bids for the construction of a new restroom facility at Contrati Field.
Yeah, let me take this up. My, obviously, my concern is not with the construction of a new restroom facility at Contrati Field, it's the financing for this, and Judy and I went over this this afternoon. The solicitation of bids seems to be looking toward a cost of thirty, so it says, of about $30,000, of which the sentence in the middle of the staff report, the paragraph says, "Staff has secured funding of $15,000 from the County of Marin toward this project." I can support the going out for informal bids, but it should be with the idea that it will be in the full amount of about $30,000, not $15,000, because that $15,000 is from the so-called slush fund, which the grand jury has found fault with, the county itself has decided to do away with, and I spent six months of my life talking about it in the Ross Valley. So we can either structure this that the full amount of the informal bids would be in the full amount of the 30-odd thousand dollars, but not, in my opinion, and I won't vote for it, if it's just $15,000, and I will not support or vote for it, and I will speak out vociferously, because that program is, has been determined by parties bigger than me to be somewhat corrupt and inexcusable.
Well? There is, of course, a range of opinions on this matter, as long as, believe it or not, that is possible.
Didn't we accept a rather large donation from that fund to acquire the Melvin property?
I don't know where Hal accessed the funds, whether it was from that or from his county office, I don't know.
Really? I mean, I thought it was pretty well-known that we acquired $150,000 from Hal Brown to acquire the Melvin property. Aren't, I thought that was a pretty well-known...
Back in 2005 or 200...
Really?
I don't know.
You don't remember that?
No, I don't know if, but that's beside the point. I mean, what has happened is, over time, the grand jury has reported on this, and the issue has changed.
Well, at this point, we have a public need in Fairfax, and right now, those funds are still there, they're still available, and we've got a big hole in the ground that we need to fill for the public. And I understand your criticism of that program, and I think reform of the program is overdue. I've read in the Independent Journal that efforts are underway to reform it. However, if the funding is available, and if a funding commitment's been made to the town of Fairfax to benefit the town of Fairfax, I don't believe we should burden the taxpayers of the town of Fairfax with an additional $15,000 bill, when that field, in fact, is a regional facility that's used by the West Marin Little League, it's used by folks from all over Marin County. It really is a facility that's going to benefit folks countywide. And I think it's a little bit of cutting off our nose to spite our face to preemptively reject the funding source.
Sometimes ends don't justify means, and the money, to me, it's a personal feeling, is just, it's tainted, it shouldn't be. That program shouldn't be, and if it was to be, then you wouldn't see such a public outcry, even from the very body, that has utilized it to its own ends. And so you now have the grand jury, the IJ, the supervisors themselves. I think the community at large feels that's consistent. So yes, I agree with you that it's an important bathroom and public facility, but I don't, in this case, believe that the supervisors should be using that fund, so we should access those funds, and we should find the $15,000 from other places. But I, you know, like most things that we discuss, there's neither a right nor a wrong, it's just reasonable differences between council members, but I will not support it with the $15,000 from that fund.
Let me just throw something else at you. There's going to be a number of funding sources for that building. Little League is going to be kicking in money. EcoFest has made a commitment to purchase water-efficient plumbing fixtures. So I guess my only point to kind of soften yours is that it is going to be funded in an unconventional manner by various community sources. I don't believe the money is tainted. I think it is sourced from a program that really is anachronistic and should have been changed a long time ago. And I agree with you on that point, but I do feel, given the nature of the facility, the various funding sources, regional impact of the facility, that we should go ahead.
Every single project that this, I believe, that the supervisors have backed has been, those, I haven't reviewed every single one, but I'll make a blanket statement, they're all worthy in large measure. This is worthy in significant measure, but I won't support it, because I don't believe that the process is democratic. So I just want to...
Yeah, no, and I understand that, and I respect our differences.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, there's a range of opinions on this. I mean, I look... Yeah, I mean, there's a range of opinions on this, I mean, I, I look around town, the park right down next to here, the funds to finish that was done from the same funds a number of years ago. And it is anachronistic that the supervisors are getting to decide where this money goes, and I think that that's where the grand jury report found fault in the process. It actually found that nobody had actually abused that process, it was just, you know, implied that it could happen, and you know, maybe this is a bad way to set it up, you know, which is, I mean, democracy is a somewhat clunky and messy process, and this is how you figure these things out and make them better, is you talk about it and you devise a system where it's better. I mean, this is the taxpayers' money, it's going to some things that benefit the taxpayers. And I think we're all trying to do the right thing and, you know, take care of our community in the right way. How it's done, yeah, there's almost always a better way, but, you know.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just asking for permission to go out to bid.
I would love you to go out to bid, because we don't know how much it's going to cost without the, that.
No, and we don't know how much funding we need.
This is digression here, and.
Can I add one thing before we probably likely approve this thing? This, if this is going to be an informal bid, can we make some statement in the bid package about giving local contractors extra points on the bid?
As long as it's legal, I think we can.
Well, okay, we've just heard, if it's, if it's, I think the state contracting limit is 40,000, so we're under, or maybe more, it's been raised because of inflation. So we're below the state contracting bid, which requires a whole formal bid process.
Yes.
So if we're legal, and maybe our council can check, maybe this is a project that should be given preference to a local contractor, even though it actually was a local contractor who started it, but, but be that as it may, you know, I think this would.
It was our plan to distribute it to local contractors.
The question I have is, well, that's great, I think that's terrific, but the question is, will we go out and solicit bids for $30,000?
Absolutely, well, whatever it costs, whatever the project costs, we'll solicit bids for the project.
Would you then kiss off the $15,000 from the slush fund?
I, I wouldn't personally, but it's not my decision to make. I, I feel like the, the grand jury is, is critical of the process, and the process sounds like it's going to change in the next fiscal year. But, but I think it's a worthy project, and, and I don't, I don't personally have a problem accepting this money from the county.
Right, but I don't, the one thing I don't understand, Judy, so, so help me out here, is we're going to, you want authorization to go out?
To bid.
It's a project for $30,000.
I don't know how much it's going to be until we get the bids.
Pick it, pick the number, 30,000. Are you looking to fund this with the $15,000, or are you looking to fund it with other sources beyond the $15,000?
The only secure funding I have thus far is the $15,000. I'm still looking for other funding.
Okay.
Okay, for this project. There, there are possibilities for funding. I, I just mentioned that because it's the only funding that we've identified for this project yet.
Okay, then two things, one, I'll, I'll vote against this, and Garrett, welcome to Fairfax.
Yep, so is there public comment on this?
Absolutely.
Councilmember, staff, and citizens, I'm Chris Land Canyon Road. Just, legal minds are wrangling up here, but the point is Supervisor Hal Browns supported Fairfax many times over, paid for the playground at White Hill School, helped us when we got in trouble with Center Boulevard. Actually, the contracts that nonprofits sign with the county are pretty transparent and straightforward, actually helped fund the beginning of the Marin County Bike Coalition, it's a professional organization dedicated to helping the entire community. And I think Councilor Bragman has a really good point, that this is a regional facility, and we need to step up, democracy in action, just vote.
Thank you.
Mimi Newton, 139 Mono, I appreciate your comments, David, but as long as the program hasn't been eradicated, I say if the money's green, it's, take it, you know, so.
Thank you. If there's no other public comment, I'll close the public comment part of this. Pam?
I would be happy to make a motion that we go forward with a request for bids, solicit informal bids, with the only note being that we do a preference for local contractors.
Okay, is there a second? Go ahead, Ryan.
At the end of the day, a lot of the people in our communities beyond Fairfax don't like politicians for a lot of different reasons. And I don't like politicians for a lot of different reasons, and I, and I kind of am one. But at the end of the day, this is a bathroom for children, and it's for the greater of the community. And I hate to see, although I appreciate David Winesoff's points, and I actually agree with where he's coming from, I think as people and politicians, we have to stop this leveraging for positions and just look at the base of what the argument is or what the need is, and do what is best for the most people.
So do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a.
Could I make just one other point? Okay, not, not about the funding. One of the things I talked to Judy about is getting showerheads stubbed out in the facility. We don't have anywhere for bikers or other recreational users in town to get cleaned up. I, I would like us just to include an item in the bid package to not build showers, but just stub out the plumbing in case we want to go there, because we really do need to think about that.
That's, that's better Boulevard Design, sure, perhaps have some kind of payback.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea.
So I.
Would you like to amend your?
My motion reflect that.
Thanks. I'll second that.
Okay, so we have an amended motion, Hartwell, and a second O'Neill, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have four in favor, one against, which is, David Winesoff is the one voting against, so. Next, we have number eight, the award to bid the tree planting at Pastori Sidewalk project. And Pam, you would like this pulled, so.
Yeah, I'm trying really hard not to delay this process, but you know, knowing that we seem to be mildly cursed on every project that we put out there, I wanted to really carefully check the tree, and look very specifically at exactly the tree that was listed in this contract, and did a little bit of research, and found that it can grow to be 50 feet tall, and it's rated as a high potential for root damage, which seems to me to a terrible location. And so I, I put an email into Judy, and it's gotten to Shelby, and she's supposed to get back to me. And maybe Chris will, maybe Chris will help clarify here, but my sense is that I would like to just, I'm happy to kind of move forward on this with the condition that we hear from our landscape professionals that I have somehow got the wrong information, and that it is actually, that we're actually putting in trees that are, that are not going to immediately destroy the sidewalk that took us so very, very long to get in and get right.
Pam, could I just ask you, Mayor, could I just, where is the, where is the species listed here?
It's a Robinia and Bicua purple robe, and ah, where is it?
Left side, for hair on the back edge, from this.
I see, I see, I see, I see, I see. I got you, I got you, sorry, okay.
I know we had this kind of, we'd also, we'd also discussed it being somewhat more, I, I don't want to publicize and have it wait till next month, because I know now it's probably a good, I mean, maybe it's fine to wait another month. I know we had talked about creating some sort of a variety too, and what we're looking at here is a bunch, a lot of.
Ten trees, the same.
124 bunch grasses and 10 trees. And I, I mean, I don't know, I'm just, I'm not feeling it, and so I wanted to be able to have an opportunity to talk to the landscaper and see what.
Could, could I just ask a procedural question? We, we have a special meeting set for next Tuesday morning, whether we could kick this over so that you could talk to Shelby and make sure that we're not walking into another wall with this thing?
I would, I think that's fine, I think, is that fine?
Yeah, I, I'd prefer that she give the sign-off on it too, so.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, is there a public comment on this item?
Last but not least, that's why I'm here, Chris Land Canyon Road. So the California pepper trees were planted by the movie theater, they weren't planted properly, but they're a really good tree, because they had these side branches that screened the houses across the street from the headlights in the parking lot, which is a constant, ongoing problem for people across the street. When I was precinct walking, they said, "Help us with this." And so I kept agitating to use California pepper trees, because they have lower canopy. But when the soil kind of liquefied and the trees were top-heavy, and the wind and the rain, they cut all the side branches off, and they're staked up, so I'm trying to get that fixed. But the point being, I think that, first of all, I heard this bid was $30,000, now correct me if I'm wrong, but for 10 trees, that's outrageous, okay? Those trees are worth 100 bucks a piece, okay? Because I checked, I called the nursery. So I'm saying, it's a great idea to pull that off, get some more bids from qualified local bidders, and we have insurance and all that. But I do think that there's better trees than this tree I'd never even heard of, and I got a college degree in horticulture, I've been doing this 40 years. So, point being, that I think the most important thing about this tree project is that the trees that go in there are going to screen that neighborhood from the noise of the industrial operations of the good earth. This is your big complaint, this first started off the meeting, and the whole point of replacing those trees is to try to mitigate the noise from our star tenant, the best business we have in town, brings more people here than anything else. So it's incumbent upon us all, as members of the community, and volunteers and staff, to make sure this gets done right, because there were things about Center Boulevard that weren't right. And it was called out by staff, by community members to staff, and staff didn't treat those community members with respect, and didn't listen to them, and it's still not right. And they had to spend extra money redoing driveways, and crosswalk, you know, it's just a whole can of worms. So I want to make sure this thing gets done right. So if you slow down a little bit, you won't lose anything, it's not the best time to plant, another few weeks isn't going to hurt anything, okay? Thank you. And thank you very much, Mr. Winesoff, for your preference for local contractors, that's a really important thing, and we appreciate it very much, thank you.
Yes, I guess I'll move that we, that we.
2874 is Terrace in Fairfax. I think one of the issues in which those trees had before is that the soil there is all rock, and I think you really need to look at a species of trees that's able to deal with the fractured sandstone in which it's being placed into, there's not much topsoil there, so.
I dare you to report that more than half of this contract is actually removing.
Excavating.
All, excavating all of that soil and making a place for not being plants to live.
The tree will reflect the size of the hole, so, you know, I mean, the thing is, I like the idea of keeping it low too, as well, you know, and he's got a good idea, it does block the sound. Thank you.
Yep. But it has excavated the whole trench all the way along, 120-some-feet long, four feet deep. Did you make a motion?
I can do that, I'll, I'll make a motion to continue this through our meeting, our special meeting on Tuesday.
I'll second that, we, we got to get this one right.
So we have a continuous motion, Hartwell, second O'Neill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, so, great. Okay, so now, moving on to the regular agenda, we have, sorry? It's 8:30, do we need a break?
No.
What?
Finish it.
Finish it, well, we've got five more items. Sorry?
Are you just going to introduce Garrett?
Ah, you're right. I would like to take this opportunity, before we move on to the regular agenda, to introduce Garrett Toy, sitting in the front row here, and it looks like he's going to be our next town manager. Because one of the things that we just approved in the consent was the contract, so, so welcome to Fairfax, and I hope you like it so far. Yeah, we, we want to welcome you to the town and hope that, you know, it's the start of a, a good, long relationship, so, welcome.
Great, if I can, I just really like to thank the council for your support and commitment, providing me the opportunity, it's a great community, I'm really looking forward to working with the council, your excellent staff, and actually, all the residents and businesses as we move forward and try to achieve the different goals of the council. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, on the regular agenda, number nine is adoption of resolution number 13-2, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax approving the option agreement for the Upper Ridgeway properties and authorizing the town manager to exercise the option and accept the properties on behalf of the town. And this is brought to us from the Open Space Committee, and I believe.
Thank you, Mayor Reed, members of the council. My name is Jack Judkins, and I'm the co-chair of the Fairfax Open Space Committee. I live at 263 Bellinas Road in Fairfax. This is an item that we've brought to you twice before, initially just to, to let you know that the Open Space Committee had an interest in property in Upper Ridgeway that has attributes that we think would add greatly to, to the town, and those attributes include the fact that it's undeveloped land, it provides public access from a public street up to already existing open space lands held by the San Anselmo, Town of San Anselmo. This property is, was being offered for sale, we asked the council for authority to negotiate with the property owner, we've been through that process now, and we have an agreement with the property owner, subject to the Town Council's approval. So as the staff report indicates, the, the form of the purchase is an option, and so the town would purchase an option from the property owner for the initial price of $2,250. A second payment of $2,250 would be made within six months if the option had not yet been exercised. There would be a year in total in which the town could exercise the option. The purchase price under the option would be $45,000 if purchased within the first six months, or $47,500 if purchased within the year. Currently, what, what the Open Space Committee is suggesting is that we use existing town open space, excuse me, existing town funds dedicated for open space purposes, these are funds that the Open Space Committee has, by and large, raised through various events and fundraising activities, and in addition to undertake additional fundraising. So this is not something that will draw on the general fund, and we believe that within a year, we can raise the full amount needed. At this point, we have about $9,000, so sufficient funds certainly to cover the costs and the, the associated costs of the transaction and to pay the option payment. We have explored similar properties that have been sold over the last couple of years in and around Fairfax, and we believe that, that the price of 45,000 is extremely fair. I've, I've had the pleasure of talking with Mr. Reed, who is the owner of the property, and he is really an exceptionally kind man, who decided, I think, that rather than try to draw whatever maximum profit he could out of this property, he'd rather see it be used for the benefit of the town. And so we strongly recommend that you authorize us to move forward with this acquisition through the terms of the option agreement. They may change in non-material ways, because we haven't crossed every T and dotted every I with the property owner, but I expect that the terms will be substantially in the form that's been presented to you. So I haven't spent much time talking about the property, because we've done that in two meetings before today. If you want me to go into some of the details about it, I'd be happy to do that. And if you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Well, I could paraphrase it really quickly, having walked the property, I know that it connects from a street up to a ridgeline, open space, it's, you know, a relatively easy-to-walk trail. It's, you know, a relatively easy-to-walk trail, and it's a nice piece of property. Fellow council members, have any comment on this, or do we need more description? Is there any open comment from the audience about this? Questions?
Barbara Kohler, 14A Corne, I'm also a member of the Open Space Committee. I'd like to strongly urge the council to support our request. It's a beautiful piece of property, and we're really thrilled about it and excited for... This property will provide a lot of opportunities for conjunction with other open space, so it will add a lot of benefit to our town.
There's no further comment on this item? I'd like to close. Comment? Ryan, do you have a...
As a founding member of the Fairfax Open Space Committee, these are the best moments of my time serving the town in any capacity. We started out as a group that didn't have two pennies to rub together, and the group was just volunteers that were picking up their bootstraps and getting things done to the best of their abilities. And now, the Fairfax Open Space Committee is a very talented, very dedicated group of people, and they are serving our town and, most importantly, future generations of our town. I don't think there's anything more noble than trying to acquire open space to leave it for future generations. It's fantastic, and you all deserve a tremendous amount of credit. And I know personally how far we've come, because I was there day one, but to see these kind of things come, it represents a tremendous amount of work that nobody sees until you get to these moments. So, if there's any, if there's not any other comment, I'd like to make the motion.
Seconded is the other founding member, Jack, staff. Really tremendous job, as you've been doing for the last couple of years. Easiest vote of the night.
So, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 13-2, proposed terms of option agreement for purchase of real property of the assessors, parcel number 00119307 and 09, and for acceptance of a donation of a real property, assessors, parcel number 00119303, and authorization of our new town manager, Mr. Toy, to negotiate and enter into the agreement to exercise the option and accept the real property.
So, we have a motion, O'Neil, Second Winesaw. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Congratulations. Great job.
Hooray.
So, I do want to say one thing that I forgot to say, which is that I really want to thank the town staff for helping me prepare all of this and get it before you, because they really did a lot in a short period of time over the holidays so that we could get this to you today. So, especially Judy and Jim, and I'm sure the planning staff worked on it as well. So, thanks for that.
Indeed. I think that goes with almost every item on here, we should be thanking staff for... It gets, sorry? It's been a request for a small break. Can we... Five, 10 minutes, something like that? Okay, thanks.
All right. It's a race not to be the last one up here.
The minutes reflect, Neil was not the last one. You have the context now, that's good.
All right. I'd like to call -- oh.
Is that -- so she's left in the respite?
Yeah. Drama in real life.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Sorry? Yeah. Yeah, okay. If you could move the conversation out to the hall, or we'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. Our next -- next item is item number 10, Discussion and Consideration of Possible Adoption of Resolution 13-3 Directing the Planning Commission to Draft an Ordinance to Regulate Leaf Blowers in the Town of Fairfax.
Okay. If you recall, this was brought up back in October by Mr. Douglas Green, who's with us tonight. And then, at the open mic on October 3rd, and we put it on the agenda for December 5th, and discussed it, and as the code stipulates, a formality is that we have to come back with you with a resolution giving us our marching orders. And that's what we're here tonight, is to present you with the resolution you requested. It's in your packet, it's in the public packets, it's online for those watching from home tonight. And this is just a formality, to start the process for staff to address the issue, make recommendations, and take it to the Planning Commission, where there will be a public hearing, I guess maybe more than one. And staff will start to become up to date on these issues, and this dust storm that Mr. Green has kicked up. So without further ado, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. I wish you could have put it in gazillion point type, because we've all received many emails and letters from members of the community. It's gas leaf blowers. We are not looking to ban leaf blowers. It is the gas version that we are seeking to have the Planning Commission attend to. Yes?
Correct. If you look at the title of this resolution--
Right there. It's right there in the thing, and you go on and you're whereas to discuss this. But the community should understand, there are options. There are electric leaf blowers, there are battery-powered leaf blowers, there are plenty of exceptions that the Planning Commission could consider with regard to gas leaf blowers. But it is the regulation of gas leaf blowers here, that I'm hoping that if I say it enough times, the community will understand that we are not removing the various options that are still available to them, because as we've learned through our correspondence, there are folks who have large pieces of property, folks who are not as ambulatory as others, many, many good reasons. But it is just this subset of leaf blowers that we are tasking the Planning Commission to attend to. Will?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, I have a comment like that, but go ahead.
Um, I was under a different opinion. I was under the opinion that the most important aspect of what we are trying to fix here is sound. I think that the decibel level of the leaf blower is much more important, in my mind, as a problem. I know that there's a lot of issues that we have to discuss when we look at this, including the pollutants that are put up in the air. However, I view this as, and not a ban of all leaf blowers, I have one. And what I'm trying to say is that I think that more important isn't necessarily gas. If they can make a silent gas leaf blower, I don't have a real problem with that as a tool to be used. It's the sound that I feel as though is the biggest complaint, and I feel as though we should look at all options and make it a sound issue, rather than a style or type of -- because if they -- my point, to your point, is if they develop an electric leaf blower that's louder than the gas leaf blower, we're right back where we started. So I think we have to base this on sound.
Then you better have this resolution rewritten.
Yeah, I -- well--
Or amended.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's really why that's before us tonight, is--
Well, the gentleman's commented, and I'm sure he's going to come up and remind us, that, and I think I saw you on television speaking to the issue as well, which was the blowing of the, as my grandmother would say, schmutz around from these things, was also a great concern of yours as well. It was sound plus schmutz.
I have COPD. The dust and the pollution that is kicked up by these things is actually horrendous, and it's very bad for asthmatics and people that have breathing problems.
Yeah. If -- well, actually, for a minute, David, I'm going to hold it to the council comments for a moment, and then I'll open it to the public in a moment. And forgive me if I don't pull up the title of what we talked about last month, but I believe it was leaf blowers, and not gas-powered leaf blowers. And for me, the information that came up with, along with the noise issues in last month's packet, was really eye-opening, because not only did we hear about, you know, the noise that these produce, which is one of the things that people complain about, but a myriad of health issues. Five pounds per hour of, you know, dried-out fecal matter, among other things, gets pumped into the air, and it's floating around, getting breathed by people for days in some cases. Yeah, schmutz is perhaps the -- you know, but you might as well describe what it is. I mean, it's dirt, heavy metals, lead from, you know, the cars that have been driving years ago, but the lead's still blowing around out there. So there's a health issue on that level. And there's also an ecological level, it's blowing off all the topsoil. So, you know, it's not actually necessarily a very good environment to grow things in, if all their humus is being blown away constantly. So I was a little disappointed to see it come back as gas blowers only, and it kind of reduces it to the noise issue, which I thought was just a part of what we were talking about. And, you know, we've all received a number of different letters from different points of view. People stopped me on the street, and, you know, starting the very next morning after we heard it last time, with a range of opinions on it. I think this is a hot-button issue, and I think it is -- people feel very strongly about it. And we need to make sure that what we send to the Planning Commission gives them something to put some thought into, and craft something that makes sense for the community. I mean, there's economic issues, there's noise issues, there's health issues, there's ecological issues. So, are there other comments? Yes?
There's also vacuums, right? So you don't have to blow this stuff, you flip a button, reverse it, put a mulcher on it, and you can actually vacuum up the debris. Again, it's the sound issue that is very important, that would affect people, but that option should be looked at, because it may take away putting the particulates in the air, and actually vacuuming it in, and filtering the air that goes back out. Something that you can do, if you want to do the same job, it's just a little bit more movement. But something, I mean, something needs to be looked at.
Are there other comments?
I had a comment, Mayor.
Larry, then.
Or a question, because one of the things that came up when we talked about it last time, was the myriad of other power tools that are disturbing people in the community, and it seems like noise disturbance has become a hot-button issue from 7-Eleven, to Good Earth, to leaf blowers, to I-don't-know-what, rock and roll. So, you know, I mean, part of this, part of what we're dealing with is living with each other. And, I mean, I do take the issue fairly seriously. I mean, it's an issue for some folks, it's not a big issue for me, because I can just turn over and go back to sleep, which I guess a lot of people can't, and I'm not a great sleeper, but that's beside the point. I'm just wondering, you know, we do have a noise ordinance. Maybe we should really be looking at revising our noise ordinance to restrict the use of power tools, or, I mean, maybe we need to be taking a more creative cut at this thing.
May I just articulate a couple of points? If you notice in the resolution, the draft resolution, number five, under the itemized list, it says whether or not to include other gasoline-powered equipment in the regulations.
Okay.
And then in the first paragraph, at the end of that list of eight items, it actually stipulates that the Planning Commission should also consider whether the amendment should be part of the zoning code, chapter 8.20, noise, or another section of the code.
You know, I'm glad it's there, I didn't read it that carefully, so--
Good, good.
-- if they have the discretion to do that.
Good.
Because just looking at it as a, like a narrow issue, that's, it's going to come right back to us, it's, we should be using our time more efficiently.
And if I could articulate, one, item three is also address, starting to address the pollution issue from whatever equipment is bringing things up, and so--
So, so there is broader discretion in the resolution?
Right. And I actually, I'm sort of on the fence. I came away from the meeting a little bit, John, the same way you did, that we were talking about generically, but I asked staff to go back and listen to the tape when this was first drafted, and then I was presented with this, an early draft the staff had prepared, and I was assured that in fact, in reviewing the tape, that this was as articulate as staff could determine the conversation that had taken place. And then, happily, Mr. Karpik put his finishing touches on this, but we stand by for any amendments you would like to make.
Well, you know, my only comment to that was, is, rather, you know, maybe the title should be amended to reflect the somewhat broader parameters of your charge, or the Planning Commission's charge?
So--
Anyway, it looks like you've covered that. Could I ask, Jim, just, do we need to amend the title to include the things that are already included in the resolution?
You may want to take out the word "gas." Or you could say leaf blowers and other, and similar equipment?
And other power equipment, or other--
Yeah.
-- power tools. So I would probably, you know, I think that's a good idea, to amend this thing, to give the Planning Commission broad enough charge that we're going to get a meaningful ordinance back, that's going to cover a lot of the problems that are coming before us.
Then go through the rest of this thing to with a fine-toothed comb, because you're going to see gas as the focus in the--
Yeah, we could take out the gasoline--
Yeah.
-- as it appears, and just leave it general--
Yeah.
-- generally applicable.
As you go through the rest of the resolution, you see gas-powered, gas-powered, gas-powered.
Yeah. Pam, did you have--
So we're redacting any reference to gas in the resolution?
Mr. Mayor? Pam, did you have other comments?
Yeah. So, I mean, this is obviously, this is a, this is tricky. I do think that the things that I really, I mean, I don't know that we're talking about an all-out ban, and I don't, I think one of the things, one of the pieces of information that we don't have here is, what is the decibel level? Is it, is the deci, you know, I mean, there's the noise issue, and there's a particulate issue. The noise issue, I think we deal with our noise ordinance. There are some exemptions in the noise ordinance, I didn't entirely understand, but my understanding is leaf blowers are sort of, and chainsaws and all these things are exempted from our noise ordinance? At this time?
No, not necessarily. And I can't pull it off my radar right now, but there are some stipulations in there about the intervals of noise--
Right.
-- that can exceed, yes, and, and-- Right. But it does also address power equipment--
Yeah.
-- at certain times. But you're basically, you know, you're getting into the minutia that we're about to step into--
Okay.
-- and then make recommendations, staff will make recommendations to the Planning Commission, there'll be public hearings in this room, which everybody's invited to participate in, and, you know, you learn through the public debate.
Right.
So we're about to become experts on leaf blowers--
Okay, so what you're, you're not necess, so I'm looking at these sort of, like, these, you know, one through eight recommendations here, this is, this is what you, the parameters that you are going to use for your, for moving forward, you're not necessarily looking for direction from us at this point on specifics of these.
No. No, we deduced this from your conversation.
Okay.
And if you go to the paragraph above, introducing these eight items, it actually says, "to include but not be limited to these eight items." So I predict we will have a broader field of issues that come before the Planning Commission, whether it's prompted by staff or public comments.
Okay. That's helpful.
Okay.
Yes, Ron?
In talking to a lot of different people about this going on, and I've had several people that just stopped me on the street and said, "Hey, you're not really going to ban leaf blowers." So this is definitely a topic that a lot of people are watching, listening, and reading. Going back to the sound issue, I noticed that we're talking about amending this to read gas, but I think we may have to amend this to say, you know, blowers, and change blowers to power tools, where, where a lot of the concerns, where someone who was very wanting of the, or in need of the, of the leaf blower, or against the leaf blower, brought up the argument of, well, what's the difference if the sound is bothering you versus the chainsaws? I mean, as a member of the Tree Committee, I get phone calls about permits based on sound, okay? Not particulates in the air, someone's cutting trees. Well, again, there's not a home in the town of Fairfax that does not have the threat of falling limbs. And if you're going to make the distinction based on a caller complaint that someone is using a leaf blower or a chainsaw, I think we have to, I think we have to take the broader purpose. If you put in here these impacts of leaf blowers, and whereas the term that leaf blowers, and in number two, limiting the days and weeks of leaf blowers can be operated, I think we have to decide if we're talking about particulates in the air or sound. Because I'd like to see this have a power tools concept, not just a blower tools.
But wouldn't you agree that there's a question of ubiquitousness as occasionalness? There's a guy who has a chainsaw somewhere in my neighborhood, and he uses it from time to time, okay? But what I mostly hear from folks about these leaf blowers is, it's a lot, and it's often. Whereas other power tools and things might certainly be even more annoying and even louder, but they're more infrequent. And I think that's the distinction that the gentleman raised in his comments in part, and at least what I'm hearing from folks, as we all are in the public comments.
If I, if I may--
Address that, right.
You know, you and I live in different parts of Fairfax. You know, you're up on the top of Ridgeway, where there's not a ton of trees, you know? You walk anywhere into Cascade Canyon, and you got a chainsaw every hour, on the hour, at least, sometimes multiple chainsaws, because there's so much growth, there's threat of fire, people are concerned, and we're telling people, remove your underbrush, you know, take care of these things. There, if you would have been into the Tree Committee meetings, you get people coming into these meetings that are terrified that trees are going to fall on them, and they're cutting off branches all the time. So all I'm trying to say here is, if we're going to take the time and the effort to address the blower, which I think we really should do, I think we should just encompass another aspect of it, so it's, so it's looked at.
Let me see, I've received from our interim town manager some friendly amendments that I think cover it, so let me see if I can briefly walk us through this. And the title, if we just redact gas, in fact, redact the word gas throughout the resolution, and at the end of the title add, "and other power equipment," okay? And then in the first paragraph, starting with whereas, the last line, the first three words of that last line, just redact gasoline-engine-powered leaf blowers, and insert after leaf blowers, "and other power equipment within the town limits."
That's exactly what I'd written in my notes, that exactly, that'll encompass it all, and it makes it real simple to move forward with them.
Thank you, Judy. Bingo.
Great, thank you. And unless there's pressing comments right now, I'd like to open it up to the public, because I think that there's quite a few comments that we're going to hear there, too.
Can I just say one thing, Mr. Mayor, first?
Yes.
I just want to remind the public that we're not deciding anything tonight. You're setting the parameters for staff to go forward and start to do the research, and make the staff recommendations, and then hold the public meetings before the Planning Commission. So the deliberation is not necessary tonight. It's not going to do anything.
Yeah. Though, if there are other issues--
Thank you.
-- that should be--
Yeah, thank you, yes.
Put in this, basically, what we are developing tonight is a document that is going to go to the Planning Commission, that kind of gives them the parameters, the guidelines, that they should be deliberating about to come up with--
Actually gives us our marching orders on here to frame it for them.
Okay. So with that in mind, I'd love to hear public comments. So please approach the podium if you have comments, and, and state your name and where you live.
My name is Douglas Green. My main concern is for my health in this issue, and that's the one thing that I think that is most important about this. I know that this is going to be probably some time before it actually gets passed, but the fact is that I've just talked to Jim about the, about the issue, and there's several things that I know that have not been stated in my paperwork that I've been trying to present to the town, you know, such as the global warming, the, the fact that they're just ruining all types of life, you know, the ground, and the worms, and the birds, which are being blown away by these things. There's many things that are somewhat overlooked. I feel almost that I've learned so much since I got into this originally, you know, I just hope that something can be done to eliminate them totally. And naturally, with me needing my air more than most, I think, you know, it's very important to me especially. But I know that it's important for all life to get rid of these things. I have talked to so many people on the street, and had 90% of them say that they hate these things. And I also, you know, have gotten so much support, I've had people come up on the street and thank me for what I've been trying to do. And just so I feel like I'm really, you know, I don't know why I got these things started, except for the fact that I got blown by one of these leaf blowers. And the dust and all that thing is, you know, since that time, I've been on TV, and I've been on the front of the Independent Journal, I just can't even believe that this thing's snowballed so much. And I hope that something gets done about it. Thank you.
21 Olima Road, Terry's Fairfax. I think it really gets down to civility amongst people. I mean, are you going to be courteous to your neighbor and stick the leaf blower in their window and blow leaf over in their yard, and stuff like that? The other issue is, is you're talking about other pieces of equipment, too. Chainsaws, concrete-cutting saws, gas-powered saws, and stuff like that. And I know that we have an ordinance around the decibels we're supposed to be able to generate and not disturb people, or whatever. But it brings up the concern around the idea of the use of gas-powered tools. I have a chainsaw, I cut wood up, I like to, you know, keep my property clean and have firewood, and I wouldn't want to have to be, you know, prevented from doing that in order to satisfy, I guess, my neighbors from not hearing any noise. My concern, my thought is, is that maybe looking at these gas-powered pieces of equipment, there should be a limit on the CCs or the size of these engines, so the noise won't be such an issue. But, you know, as far as the leaf blowing and blowing stuff around, I know when I sweep my stairs down, I can see the dust flying all over the place, but the leaf blower does blow up more dust. I think the main issue here is really about the noise, and be it that the fact that we already have a noise ordinance, I'm trying to figure out why we are trying to redefine it again. Okay? Thank you.
Lou Vicaro, 21 Olima Road. When I first heard about this, I think I just read it in the paper, and Mr. Green indicated that he sits out on his patio at 8:00 in the morning, which is nice, you know? But then the garden people came around about that same time with their leaf blowers, and this is what started all this. When I said to myself, and I said to my wife, I says, "Well, why don't they tell the gardeners to come a little later? Why do they come at 8:00? You know, come at a time when he's not sitting out there." And it just seemed like that's all that has to be done, instead of getting the whole town upset over this whole thing. And I don't know why they don't do that. But, my son has a tree service, and they have a couple of leaf blowers. I got one, I just bought it a few months ago, and the new one that I bought isn't as noisy as the old one I had. They have a different muffler on them. So they're really not a problem. But I guess a lot of you know where I live, I think you know where I live, and I got about an acre of land, and I got a long driveway. I got eight huge oak trees growing along the creek. And if you want to see leaves, you come around in the fall, and if you want to have some exercise and using a rake, I welcome you to come around and start raking. It'll, you have to do it every two days, and I do it with a, with a blower. I don't seem to bother anybody, but I could never get that done. I'm 87, and I'm not young like I used to be, so I got to have that leaf blower. And, and I can't do it maybe once a week, or every other week. Those leaves, when they start falling, they fall, and it's a mess, and I can't just have to have it. And I think that what you're doing here is you're opening up a can of worms. It's a leaf blower, then it's going to be a chainsaw, then it's going to be something else. But I think that this equipment that's noisy will-- eventually, I think the manufacturer's gonna realize that the people don't like the noise, and they're gonna make them so that they're not as noisy. And I think that the town is just getting too far ahead of itself, and they should just kinda cancel the whole thing and let it just go. Because the people that have leaf mowers, they wanna use them, and they wanna use them to clean their property. The dust that comes up goes right down again, and it's, I don't see anybody going to the emergency with problems with breathing, because nobody comes around when you're blowing leaves or dust or whatever. You know, they stay away. And they're not gonna come around when you're blowing up a bunch of leaves and stuff. So I think that we're just blowing this all out of proportion. And I think it's a waste of town priorities to send it to the planning commission, 'cause when it goes to the planning commission, there's gonna be a mob there. Just hollering for too much noise, too much dust, too much this. And I think the whole thing is ridiculous. I really do. And I think that the town has enough ordinances now that you're just creating another new ordinance, you're gonna be just like the smoke people. Now you can't light a fire because of the, the smoke. And years ago, I remember when that first started, I don't know how many of you were in the council at that time, but some lady from the air district come over and told us what was gonna happen. And I made the comment, I said, well, geez, in Fairfax, we have the nicest air in, in the whole Bay Area. Why do we have to be restricted of using our fireplaces? And she says, well, it's not Fairfax, it's the East Bay. He said, the smoke that's created in Fairfax goes over to the East Bay. And she's right, you know, she is right. Because I'm a pilot, and I used to take off off a Norse field, and as soon as I get up to a thousand feet, I look over in the East Bay, I can see all the smoke over there. But Fairfax was nice and clean, you know, Novato. But it's just when you get up in the air and take a look, you can see where it's all going. So I, they have a point, you know, but it's just one of those things. It's something that we don't do now, when they declare it a no burn day. And, and when you do the, the blower now, you're gonna say, well, you can only blow stuff on certain days. Well, as soon as the fall is over, and like now, I don't have any more leaves, because all the leaves have fallen already, so I don't really have a use for a, for a blower. But at that time, when the leaves start falling, it's a necessary item, and, and I think that you ought to just leave people alone, let them do what they wanna do. That's all I got to say.
Are there any more public comments on this issue?
My name's Connie Breeze, and I live on Meadow Way. And I wanna thank you for bringing this up. I, I, well, we've moved to Fairfax about just under twenty-five years ago. Back then, we never heard leaf blowers. It was peaceful and quiet every day of the week, and the yards got tidied. And the difference now is that the quality of life, there's a severe impact on the quality of life. In our canyons, we in Cascade Canyon get hit with leaf blowers every day, all year round, because each day, the maintenance crews, it's generally crews coming in, a few people who own their own blowers. The maintenance crews come, there's the Saturday people, there's the Monday people, the Tuesday people, the Wednesday people, the, every day of the week, all year, and they blow whatever bits of stuff are around, and they use the blowers at high volume. And I do think we need to look at it. Leaf blowers are distinct from other tools such as chainsaws or, or tree chippers, the kind of things that people need to, to do major jobs. We do need to keep after our trees and, and keep the town safe and all that, and it's understandable. You have to use a chainsaw now and then. It's very different from continual use of loud tools for which there are very reasonable alternatives. I do wanna caution you against trying to just ban gas powered blowers, because electric blowers, in, at least in my experience, and I've really been looking closely at it, listening closely for a very long time, I've actually never heard an electric blower that is really quiet and tolerable. Oh, is it? Oh, I'm so sorry. Speaking of, oh, I'm really sorry. Is this okay then? You can actually hear me? Okay. Sorry. Okay. The sound of an electric blower carries much farther. At, I think at, at any level, an electric blower seems to, to have a maddening whine. It is possible to use a gas blower, a super low noise gas blower at a very, very low setting, and it's not that bad. So I, I think the noise level is something you really wanna look at closely. And I also wanna say that I think people need better hand tools. We have a big property, and we have a lot of trees, and we use a flat blade rake with a big pan. You can use, you can, with the straight blade, you can get everything off the stairs. It's very, very fast. I think leaf blower users very often waste a lot of time by moving leaves across distances before putting them into a bin. And instead, you can rake everything from within your radius towards you, put them in the bin, and move with your bin. You do get a lot done very quickly that way. I, I think I pretty much get our leaves up just as fast as leaf blower users do. If the leaves are wet after a rainstorm, which is when a lot of the leaves come down, rakes and big pans are generally faster, because it, wet leaves are pretty hard to move with blowers. So if a blower user cranks up a blower and points it at the leaves, it, it takes a while to move the leaves. So I, I want people to think about the very sensible use of hand tools as an alternative. I frankly think it's very strange that in a community where we, we really pride ourselves on caring about each other, for some reason, when it's time to gather the leaves, children are being brought up thinking it's absolutely normal to have someone come and crank up a really, really loud machine, and have the neighbors run for cover, and the neighbors come out and complain, and, and that's considered normal, and I just don't think it's normal. And I also am concerned about the wildlife, because in particular, birds who communicate by sound, who warn each other of predators by sound, and probably have very acute hearing, I don't know what it does to them, but I don't think it can be good to have this continual noise, noise, noise. So, I'm not sure exactly what you should do, but I think the noise level is key, and I think just a common sense look at, when do we really need blowers and when don't we, is also important. So, thanks, and I'm sorry I spoke too loud into the thing, I didn't realize.
Seeing no other public comment, I am gonna close public comment on this item then. Are there more comments from the, Pam, you have?
I think what I heard here is a consideration that should be added is something around wildlife and impacts of wildlife. I think that, and a thought certainly occurred to me also, that maybe, maybe one of the issues is, is thinking about proximity to neighbors. And I know that the sound issue, the proximity, isn't gonna have an impact, but the air quality issue, it may. So I don't know if that's, if, if, we, you kind of have in there, you have in there a piece on making sure that they're not blown to adjoining or private or public properties, and maybe it's a matter of, you know, in order to sort of measure that, maybe it's one of those things like our chicken ordinance, where it says, you know, can't be twenty, you know, no leaf blowers used within twenty-five feet of other properties, or something along that. I don't know if that, I mean, that's kinda my thought on that. And the only other thing that I think came up was the climate change issue, and I don't know what the comparable nature is between gas and electric in that matter, because creating electricity probably causes just as much climate change damage as, to some degree, as potentially as gas, but it's maybe something we wanna, we want to consider.
So, so we'd be glad, we'll take your, depending on what the council decides, you know, we could either address your concern about wildlife under the opening sentence before the listed items, which says, but not be limited to, or you could add an item.
Either, either way. And I really, I do, I mean, I really appreciate, I spent, I made a lot of money as a teenager, raking leaves and mowing lawns, and I, I mean, I do, I have a sixteen, you know, a fifteen-year-old daughter. You've got a strapping young grandson here. Put him, put him to work. I think that our, I think that that has been, that's a lost part of our culture, and I, I really believe that, that it shouldn't be lost, and that we should bring that back. I bet when you were a kid, you raked a lot of leaves, Lou. And it's character building, right? That's good, that's good.
[inaudible]
Yeah. So that's, I mean, you know, I think we, you know, I'm glad we're looking at it, and I think it's, it's, it's valuable, and it's, and it, there's a lot of it that's really hard to regulate, so, good luck.
Could I just, you know, I think public discussion, to me, it kinda reaffirms why we're here, because you get pretty cynical sitting up here sometimes, but actually listening to what people have to say and the various points of view are very helpful and kind of inspiring, because I think we're on the right track taking a look at it. I, I don't know where we're gonna go, but I think as a community, for us to be talking to each other and letting each other know what is happening and what our feelings are on these things is incredibly important as we sort of progress as a community. So, you know, we've gotta have faith in our own processes, that we're gonna come to a good conclusion here, because it's having faith in ourselves. And really, after listening tonight, you know, it's, I, I have confidence we're gonna come to, to a good place. So, you've been heard, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that point is, is very related to it, and it, it's something that you can't really do by regulation, you know, saying, oh, you can't do this, or you can't do that. Because part of it is civility and doing things with the appropriate tool at the right time to, so that you basically don't bug your neighbors with noise, or you don't, you know, kick up all kinds of stuff. Being conscious of each other in the community is important. And we can't really pass an ordinance saying that, but hopefully we can encourage that atmosphere. I mean, that's, that's something that's important. We may be able to encourage educational programs that way, you know, by making the materials available, so that that knowledge is available also. That might be a good thing also to bring to the planning commission. You know, for instance, I mean, there's plans for floodgates available at town hall, for instance, you know. Nobody says you have to put floodgates on your house, but if, if there's a threat of a flood coming in your door, it's a pretty good idea to go down there and get those plans, and not too hard to put them on there. So.
I, I would make a motion to approve the resolution as amended, with the changes that were recommended by staff and the council.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion, Bragman, second. O'Neil, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving on to item number eleven, which is adoption of resolution number thirteen four, a resolution of the town council of the town of Fairfax, in support of the principles set forth by the nationwide mayors against illegal guns. This has my name and David Wintoff's name also on it. And David wrote the initial thing. Basically, it's, do you wanna introduce it?
Sure. You know, in light of the tragedy in Connecticut, I'm sure all of us townwide had conversations, of course, at dinner tables, and with family members, with friends, and in thinking about how the council could add its voice to the issue on the Channel Nine NewsHour, they actually had a representative of mayors against illegal guns. Looking at the website, I thought, I saw that this would be just one of many opportunities and one of many measures individually, collectively, that we could give voice to. If you go on the website, you will see that an ever increasing number of mayors from across the country, well into the high hundreds, maybe over a thousand at this point, it scrolls down and shows that there's nationwide support for the principles that are enunciated by this organization. They're not fully encompassing all of the issues we, we can address. I think John raised a good point, that it might be limited in its attention to the mental health impacts that should also be attended to by government. But I thought the organization, spearheaded by Mayor Bloomberg out of New York, and Mayor Marino out of Boston, really went to the heart of some of the things that we as a council could enunciate, what government can say about how guns should be regulated more effectively and efficiently. Is it the last word? No, it's the first word, much like we see in today's New York Times observing that Governor Cuomo is moving action through the New York State Legislature. Last night, I heard on the, last word with Lawrence O'Donnell, Senator Blumenfield, I think it is, from Connecticut, speaking of some of the issues that he's bringing forward. There's a myriad outcry. We see the president and the vice presidents moving forward on this as well. So I would ask the council to consider this step, among many others, and to give our support to this organization, as have the mayors of so many other, I think, cities, slowly through Marin, but also San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose on the list. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I should add to that. You know, in looking through, basically, this is a conversation that's going on nationwide, and I feel it's, in its incubating stages, I mean, it's a conversation that certainly hasn't started, you know, in the last month or two. It's an ongoing discussion, and it is, it's one of the problems we have in America in that we have the Second Amendment, for, and there's some very, you know, strong feelings and some good reasons, and there's some history there. But technology has changed quite a bit, too. You know, and basically, a lot of, it, it's difficult to come up with systems that allow us to have a, a civil society and, and, you know, not have these crazy disasters like what recently happened in Connecticut happened. My wife is a nurse on the psych unit at Marin General. She, you know, comes back with, you know, I mean, she can't talk about what happens with specific individuals or even specific events, but sometimes she comes back like, yikes, you wouldn't believe what we have to put up with today. And I think that that situation, when you have somebody pretty unhinged, and they have access to, you know, semi-automatic weapons or something like that, you know, that's, it's a bad combination. And this is a conversation that needs to be had. And is there an easy solution? I mean, you know, you think leaf blowers was hard. And I think what is proposed here is to, I mean, I, it's signed by mayors of different towns that they think that this is a problem, this needs to get dealt with. And where we don't have directly elected mayors, you know, really needs the support of the entire council, and it needs to be a community conversation. So, it's on the agenda here tonight for us to add our two cents to, and see if we wanna add anything to that conversation, so.
I, I mean, this is a hard one for me. I'm obvi, I'm not a pro-gun person. I have owned guns. I like, I mean, I think that they serve certainly a purpose in this country. I, I don't know that this is the right response. I, the, there's something about the whole tenor of this that I don't love, and I, I think it starts with the title of mayors against illegal guns, because I don't believe that there's a group of mayors that are pro-illegal guns. Starting there, I begin the issues that I have with this. Starting there, I begin the issues that I have with this. The wherethes include our wonderful president, who has taken zero to no stance on actually moving gun control in any kind of a reasonable direction. There's nothing here about assault weapons, which is what I think we should really be talking about. And we've got Dianne Feinstein, who's actually, you know, authoring a bill right now that will ban the sale, transfer, transportation, and possession of some of these weapons, not retroactively, but proactively and prospectively. And, you know, and also, you know, do the same kind of bans on clips and ammunition. And I think that's the kind of thing that we need to be really talking about. And, and I'm, you know, I'm, far be it from me to be the person who's going to sit here and vote against something that, you know, speaks out against the kind of violence that's happening in our communities and in our country. But I don't, I'm not feeling like this is it. I don't honestly understand half of what these resolutions that we're saying, that we don't, we don't really have the ability to punish to the maximum extent of the law these criminals. We don't have gun dealers in our community. We don't have any ammunition sales in our community. I don't, you know, opposing all the federal efforts to restrict cities to the right of access, use, and share trace data that is essential for effective enforcement, sounds like something that doesn't make any sense to me. This is, this is language that, that I don't even know exactly what that means. And I don't know that we're gonna, I mean, I don't know, I feel like we've kind of cut and paste something that's happening nationwide as a quick, easy paintover of this issue, of some way to do something, but I don't, I don't know that this is, this is it. I don't know. I mean, and, I mean, I'm, obviously, you know, we have a terrible event like what happened in Newtown and what happened today in California, where a sixteen-year-old was shot in a high school. And obviously, we want to do something, and I think that we should. And I think that it should be much greater than this. And I don't understand, I don't even understand what we're really resolving to do here enough to give this my vote today. And so that's, that's kind of where I'm, I'm landing on this.
We have a lot of good thinkers in this town, and a lot of them are up here. A lot of us, I don't think there's anyone that wasn't sick to their stomach about what happened. And I think it's the natural response, when you're sick to your stomach, to try to find solutions. I love people who find solutions or work hard to find solutions. Maybe some of you have ever been to lecture by Lieutenant Colonel Dave Grossman. It's a very eye-opening speaker, and I'll present you a couple of questions that he presents in his, in his lectures. Do any of you have any idea of how many students were killed in schools due to fire in the last, since 1950? Well, I'll shorten the length due to time, but the answer is zero. And the reason for this is that we, as a society, have been trained and taught to plan. You're working a fire drill from day you're a kid. We have fire exits, we have suppression systems, we build our, our schools and our buildings out of fire-resistant materials, and we are trained in our mindset to understand the danger of fire. Well, you needn't go any further than what just happened in Connecticut, but if you actually think about how many students have been killed or wounded due to violent acts, due to guns, we have to ask ourselves, what are we, as a community and a nation, doing? And that statistic alone is pretty eye-opening. I don't have all the answers, but I'm, it's time that we do get into the dialogue. You also have to remember that this thing, as I read it, is just talking about illegal guns. So although I can easily jump on board against illegal guns, California has the strictest gun laws in the state. California is well ahead of the rest of the nation, where they do background checks, they make you wait 10 days, they restrict the ammunition clips that you can have, the magazines have to have 10 rounds or no, and no more, or have to be grandfathered in and be owned before. There are strict laws in the books in California. The problem is that the rest of the nation, in my opinion, has not drafted the same precautions and has not been as progressive in these thoughts. There's a huge point, and I'm sure everybody's heard this, but the desensitizing of our youth due to violent video games is a huge part of this, too. These are the issues I think we have to address more than, I mean, I want to sign things, I want to help, I want to put my name on things, but I want it to be a well-thought-out plan, not just something that, you know, puts our name to it. I don't think anybody wouldn't be against illegal guns. There are a lot of people that get very nervous in this country, maybe not in Fairfax, but in this country, about the government taking away their firearms. And it's based on the history of our country and, and the fear of, when you take away the guns, what you leave that up to. So I would agree that it's, it's a much bigger debate and a much bigger picture than what we're, than what we're dealing with here. Of course, I'm against illegal guns, but that's not what we are up against. We are not up against illegal guns. We are up against people with intent to do harm. You can hurt as many children by locking them in a building and throwing a gas can in it as you can with a weapon, so I think we have to look at this at a much broader statement with mental illness and, and continue the debate from there.
You know, I, I think this is a very modest proposal with symbolic value only. I mean, the mainstream media is going to look at this as a big deal. It's not a big deal. This is, this is a gesture. But sometimes gestures do have some authority when enough political bodies make that gesture, that, hey, we're concerned about this, and something needs to be done. This is not doing anything, in my opinion, other than making that gesture and, and voicing our opinion. There's so many things that we really need to address to really go to the root of the problem. You know, I think back to the first presentation about the Youth Commission, $18,000 a year to youth in Fairfax out of a $9 million budget. Boy, that speaks volumes, doesn't it? About why you have disaffected youth and youth that feel left out, because, you know what? They are left out. So let's not kid ourselves about what we're doing. I do, I think guns are an extremely dangerous product and that we need to deal with them as a dangerous product. There was a great article in the IJ, of all places, by an emergency room physician named Dustin Ballard. Thirty-one thousand people a year die from gun violence in the United States. That's more than AIDS and HIV combined. And what are we doing about it? Well, what we're doing about it is we're leaving, we're putting our faith in elected officials that are listening more to the NRA than they're listening to their own constituents. Government is actually decreasing funding for research into gun violence. Why? Leading, one of the leading causes of death in the United States, and we're reducing the amount of money and resources that we're putting towards research to go, to stem the So, you know, as far as what we're doing tonight, you know, I, I agree with your skepticism about the resolution, but I think collectively, if nine councils in Marin join this, you know, it's going to get press attention, it's going to keep it in, in the media, but I think, you know, we need to move forward. I, I think we should put up a model ordinance in Fairfax. Maybe we should ban the sale of ammunition in Fairfax. Maybe there's controls that we can at least pass in Fairfax that'll be a model for the rest of the country to follow. Whether or not we have a lot of gun sales here or not, I, I mean, I know we don't. We don't have Walmart. Who's the biggest purveyor of firearms in the United States? Good old Walmart. Who's the biggest purveyor of ammunition in the United States? Good old Walmart. So, you know, as somebody said, you know, this is as American as cherry pie. One thing I want to address and just put on, on the record, and then I'll shut up, but this whole concept of guns guaranteeing freedom, I think, is completely fallacious. Guns don't guarantee freedom. Guns guarantee violence. And I want to just read a quote from a New York Times article. "The very power and possibility of free speech and assembly rests on nonviolence. The power of the Occupy Wall Street movement, as well as the Arab Spring protests, stem precisely from their nonviolent nature. Their power was made evident by the ferocity of government response to the Occupy movement. Occupy protesters across the country were increasingly confronted by police and military-style garb and effect. Imagine what this would have looked like had the protesters been armed in the face of the New York City Police Department assault on Zuccotti Park." And then it goes on to talk about, imagine if the million people that showed up in Tahrir Square in Cairo had been armed. They would have been massacred. Instead, they became a spark for a democratic movement for renewal. And so, I mean, this whole thing about guns guaranteeing freedom, you know, democracy guarantees freedom. And I do think we need to restrict the sale of guns. I think assault weapons should be purchased back by the government and prohibited to a large extent, like they were in Australia. Australia bought back 600,000 assault weapons 10 years ago. So let's not kid ourselves about, you know, this is a huge problem. It's, it goes beyond, it really goes to our priorities and a lot of other things. And I would say we ought to pass this thing and get to work actually doing something about it. That's what I think.
Yeah, so I guess we could go a couple of different ways. Public comment on this?
The measure of civilization is the extent that violence is replaced by cooperation. That's a, that's a quote from Thomas Jefferson.
Tony Udis, 74 is terrorists in Fairfax. I really do think it's an issue beyond guns. Guns are just an extension of man. It's really man who's the issue, and I think that this law that's passed, that they're trying to pass here, just masks that fact. It's really us who are deciding on where the violence will act and what we will use to create that violence with. So I think addressing the issue around having violent games in which our youth are being subject to, so they will be material for the military in the future, I think we should really be looking at what we're saying to our youth and what we are describing to our youth as civil behavior.
Anyway, on this gun thing, I think it's a good idea, you know, because what's happening is, like a family, you have a band and a wife, and usually the husband's a hunter, and he might have a lot of guns laying around. And pretty soon, the husband passes away, so the wife says, what am I going to do with all these guns? God, get 200 bucks apiece for them, get rid of them. Those are the ones we really want to get rid of. And I myself, I was a hunter, and I got a gun safe, and it's in a closet, and you can't pull it out because it's bolted against the back wall. And I probably got about 10 guns in there. They're all 30, 30, 20, 30 odd six. They're all hunting guns. And I don't use them anymore, but maybe my grandson might start hunting, I don't know. But sooner or later, I'm going to get rid of them. But I'll get rid of them for more than 200 bucks, because some of them are worth more. But I think it's a good idea for every once in a while, have a little program like this, where people can turn in guns and get money for them. I think eventually, you get rid of a lot of the guns that are not being used. So it's better than to get rid of them, to have somebody come in your house and rob your house and steal the guns. So I think it's a good idea, and I firmly believe that it's, it's well worthwhile for the council to go ahead and OK this and join the rest of the mayors in the country. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, if I could just get recognized. You know, the thing about the restricting the right to access trace data, I mean, that, that's kind of an eerie one, because what they're talking about is creating some sort of a national databank, that if you've been hospitalized for a mental health issue, that you'd have a national databank, which would be sourced by a lot of different agencies. So there are some little bit troubling things within the resolution. But again, I mean, Jon Stewart mentioned the whole conversation about gun control and said it's, it's being discussed everywhere from, you know, you know, Montana to the Kumbaya chorus here in Marin County. We were specifically called out just at least acknowledging that we have a lot of work to do to address this problem. And this is not doing it, this is just acknowledging that we, we've got to do something. And it's, it's, it's really, I think, really critical for the survival of our budding democracy, if we're going to ever get there, because to me, you know, guns do not protect democracy. We're just, we're not there. You know, I have a lot more hope in our democracy than having to protect it with a gun. I think folks do have the right to have a weapon in their home if they need that to protect themselves, although statistically speaking, those homes are going to have a much higher incidence of gun injury and gun death and gun suicide. So how much safer are those homes going to be? I guess it's an individual choice. We're not going to be addressing that tonight with this resolution. I do think it's part of a national conversation. I would like to see us discuss this on a more concrete level as we go forward with the rest of our term this year, your term as mayor. But I guess I would be willing to affix my name to the resolution.
Yes, Brian?
Quickly, just one more note, a couple of things to think about. Bad guys don't follow the rules. And that's just something to think about. I think that I really liked in here the strict penalties for lawbreakers, traffickers, illegal guns, people that are on the wrong side of making this worse. I absolutely want to notate that that, that deserves immediate and kind of no-brainer support. And Larry makes good points about weapons in homes. But keep in mind that natural disasters, if you really look into the events that happened in Katrina, and lawlessness that creates states that are in, in forms of emergency, those, those same weapons can be used to protect. And it's not all horror and mayhem. There are a lot of responsible gun owners out there, and I don't think that they should be vilified for owning and being responsible. There's a lot of gun owners that didn't shoot anybody yesterday. And I think that we have to just keep this in balance and perspective.
Can I just say something? You don't need a semi-automatic gun to go deer hunting. You know, you, you just don't need that. You know, people want to hunt, fine, that's their business. I grew up in Wisconsin, you know, used to see deer swung over cars, you know. I mean, it wasn't something I did, but I'm not going to stop anybody from doing it. You don't need a semi-automatic weapon to do that. And there's just, there's just an incredible amount of firepower out in the United States that is just appalling. And, you know, when this issue came up 90 years ago, when Chicago was getting shot up by people with Thompson submachine guns, those weapons were taken off the street. And for us to stand idly by and wring our hands about the Second Amendment, which actually is, talks about a well-maintained militia, which giving millions of guns out is, is the exact opposite of a well-maintained militia. It's creating a well-armed mob. I, I just don't think the Second Amendment really applies, and we've got responsibilities to move forward as a modern society to both protect people's rights and to protect people. So if somebody wants to make a motion, if you're the maker... So if somebody wants to make a motion, if you're the maker...
I know. I think we have another comment from Pam.
The other, I think the other issue that I, I mean, and I can either abstain from this and we can pass it forward as it is. It's, the other, I mean, I would potentially vote for it if we took out the opposing all federal efforts to restrict the sharing of the trace data. There's also a blanket support of all local, state, and federal legislation that targets illegal guns. I don't know that we blanketly support all, I haven't seen any of that legislation. I don't know what that, I mean, I have a really hard time signing on to that. If we took those two out, I could vote for it, or I'm happy to kind of abstain tonight. And I want to make a commitment to working on this, and I think that it's really critical. We, you know, there's a lot of talk about renewing the 1994 assault weapons ban. I think that that's really critical. I think that we can, you know, we're a model, we're a community that does things a little differently than everybody else, and I want to continue to do that. And I think that, you know, I'm more than happy to work with whoever, you know, wants to work with me on putting something together that makes more sense for Fairfax.
Yeah.
I'd support the amendments. And can I just point out one thing? The guns that were used to shoot Gabby Gifford, the guns that were used in Connecticut, were legal.
Yep.
Were legal.
Yep.
But they weren't legal in California.
That's true. And, yeah, I mean, I think that there are a lot of problems with this document. It's kind, I think it's a reaction type of, you know, document that, you know, it doesn't address assault weapons, it doesn't address mental health issues, it has some problems in doing, giving unfair powers to, of collecting data and things like that. In a way, it reminds me of the Patriot Act that was passed right after the World Trade Center debacle, you know, by people who hadn't read it, who passed it at an emotional moment as a reaction to something, you know, they were practically in shock, as were most people in the country at that point. And, you know, in that act, there was a whole lot of things that a lot of people don't support as Americans in it. They're kind of the antithesis of what this country is about. And so I thought it was important to bring this here as a discussion thing, and because there's a lot to say about it, and there's a lot of problems with it also. It doesn't really have any teeth in it or say anything in particular from Fairfax, except that, yes, we think this is a serious issue, and maybe by making amendments to it and passing it in that way is a good way to do it, to put the Fairfax brand on it or whatever.
Let's just put a bow around this. I think, first of all, while I don't disagree with Pam on this, I think if you're going to join a, you know, a movement, and if everybody cherry-picked out the provisions they don't like, I don't know that you can, you know, I know that we face this, sometime we go on another related issue. So while I tend to agree with you, I would say that if you're going to join something and they've enunciated principles, you kind of got to go with it, or you don't go with it. So I would say with tremendous amount of respect for all of the comments that I've heard here from the council and from the community, I would ask the council to move forward and adopt Resolution Number 13-4, and to come back at a future time with more personal, more direct, more additional provisions that speak to each of us and our community in an even more heartfelt and effective way. Then get a new mic system.
Could I just say something? I went online and checked this website out. They've actually moved well beyond this statement. And they've, there's, and I left it on my desk, I printed out a letter that they did to, I guess, President Obama. I mean, I think we should certainly, I think making a couple amendments would be appropriate. I certainly think we should state our support for renewal of the assault weapons ban that's being proposed by Senator Feinstein. I mean, that, that's what's happening next, to get so people can't run to Nevada and get a gun that they can use in California, or to Arizona and get a gun that they can use in another state. I mean, that's part of the problem. That's one of the reasons you need federal legislation on something like this, because these products travel across state lines and hurt people. So I think we need to add a statement supporting that, renewal of the assault weapons ban. And, you know, I don't think anybody's going to know, care that we dissent from creating a national databank for, you know, mental health patients, you know, when it hasn't really been fleshed out completely. So I think we could pretty safely substitute support of the assault weapons ban for that statement.
Okay. Well, the hour grows late.
I understand everybody wants to go home, but, you know...
I completely accept your friendly amendment, and as for the council's support on the amended Resolution Number 13-4.
I'm not so clear about what this amendment is. The other amendments are.
Okay, could I...
As you're going to say this, because I don't want to move forward without actually doing the research.
Okay, so, okay, well, what I'm proposing is that we delete the third bullet point, oppose all federal efforts to restrict cities' right to access and share trace data.
The fifth bullet point of supporting all legislation is also of concern to me. But again, I mean, I mean, this is, you know, I mean, I'm happy to, I think we're going to come back with something else. I mean, I think that if we want to move forward on this unchanged, I think that, you know, I don't think that my abstention is going to prevent that from happening. I don't know.
No.
So, I mean, that's...
I think we should, let's do this then, okay? Let's add an extra bullet point, supporting the reenactment of the assault weapons ban proposed by Senator Feinstein.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support anything until I've read it. And I don't know what her ban is. And I also, if you...
It's not a ban.
Okay, well, in general, I'm not going to sign on to anything that I haven't understood. And if the website that you're saying has made changes to it that have gone well beyond what I'm looking at here, and we're signing on in support of that site, I wouldn't be comfortable until I actually understand what exactly, I mean, I do want to make the gesture. I believe in the gesture. I really do. I just don't believe in putting my name on something until I have a better understanding of exactly what it is for principle reasons.
Okay. I made a proposal.
Second.
Thank you.
So just to clarify the amendments, are we just adding one and we're leaving the other two in then, that you suggested we delete?
You know, I mean, my own preference would be to delete the number three.
Okay. The trace data one.
The trace data one. And add that extra bullet point about the renewal of the assault weapons ban.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, so we have what sounds like an amended resolution, which winds off, second, Bragman. Do we do a roll call vote, or do you want to just call this out? Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm going to oppose.
I'll oppose.
Okay, three to two.
Three to two. Okay.
All right. And it's a symbolic thing. I think it's...
Symbols are important.
Yep. All right, so moving on. Our next agenda item is Number 12, Request for Authorization to Advertise for the Deputy Town Clerk Position. Do you want to take this, Judy?
Sure. Well, I think the report's pretty simple, really. As you know, I'm preparing to retire, and I'm trying hard to train somebody before I leave. I thought about this long and hard, about how to proceed, and I think advertising for the deputy clerk position with this description that's in here, which has most of the, all the duties of the town clerk, the government-mandated ones, the ones that are for the clerk actions, by advertising for someone to do this particular job gives me an opportunity to be here when someone is hired and to train that person before I retire. But it also would give Garrett and the council some flexibility going forward. If you determined that you wanted to continue the way it's been since 1931, and this person works out, and you want to appoint them to finish out my elected term, that would be an option, that would be available. If Garrett, in talking to the council, wants to give this person the added responsibility of being the assistant to the town manager, that's a possibility. If you wanted, there are other things that I do in my position that aren't just clerk things, and those, that would give you some flexibility, depending on the person who fills this role, as to where you want to go with that position. So that's why I'm recommending that we authorize this type of recruitment. So essentially, when I step down, you would have a deputy town clerk who would then hopefully be somewhat trained to do these mandated duties of the town clerk. But you would also be able to work with your new town manager to see how these other duties would be accomplished and what would make the most sense going forward. You know, sometimes a person defines a position, and I didn't think it was fair to do that with my position. I mean, I do HR, a claim that you would be wanting them to do, but maybe they have other skills, who knows? Anyway, I thought this was the best way to, right away, get someone started on training to do the actual clerk's duties, and would also give you flexibility going forward to look at this again with your new town manager as to how you want this position to change or not change, or what you want to put into this position going forward. So, yeah.
I think the only, and I have every intention to support this, I think the only question, and Michael Vivret is not here, and I know that we've saved a certain amount of money in not having a town manager for a period of time.
Right.
And that the overlap of there being a deputy town clerk and you still serving as the town clerk while we also have a town manager, I don't know what that, I think that impact of the budget is fairly minimal, but that wasn't, I don't, I didn't see that in here of, just a couple of months that it's actually going to be impacted.
Yeah, well, you know, I don't know the numbers, and Mike isn't here, and we can certainly get you the numbers, but right now, we have a part-time administrative assistant who's been kind of working in this capacity as deputy clerk. And that's already budgeted.
Okay.
That's already in there, that money.
Okay.
So that's taken care of. So I, as I phase out and this person phases in, I don't think there's a big difference, because I'll be leaving when this person's coming on board.
Okay.
Yeah, so there'll be a month, maybe, where you're paying two people.
That's, okay, that's what I figured it was a minimal kind of impact.
But it's not, it's really kind of, yeah, it's really a value, though.
Right.
To have that overlap.
Definitely. And I think the, I think...
But I don't know the exact numbers.
Okay.
And yes, we have had a lot of salary savings, but...
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, that's another story for another day about, you know, maybe a conversation with the new town manager and the council about positions and maybe things that could, would make sense going forward.
And let me also just be the first one to go on the record to say, you're not replaceable at all.
Oh, thank you, it's very kind.
Sorry, I got you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But thank you.
No, well, the costs, you know, back here for this particular position that are attached, but you would be paying me and this person for probably a month.
Which I think is perfectly, the training cost alone is well worth it.
Yeah. So that's my proposal.
Thank you.
First of all, I think it's incredibly noble for you to actually be trying to replace yourself, because we all have to replace ourselves, because we're all going to be replaced. I think it's much better to plan. And I also think it speaks pretty highly of your devotion to our towns, and I think you deserve to be recognized for that. The other thing I want to bring up is the town clerk's position is actually an elected position. It's actually a statutory position of state statute. It's found in state statute. And one of the requirements of the position is residency in Fairfax. And going to this whole theme that we seem to have hit on of local, you know, contractors, local people, I certainly think that should be considered, because when the council passed a resolution to abolish the office as an elected office on a four-to-one vote, I opposed that resolution. And I still oppose it. I think there's something about having an elected town clerk that gives the public a representative in the inner workings of government that is somewhat ensures transparency and access. So I just wanted to point out that there is a residency requirement to actually replace you, and until and unless your position is...
That's why I wanted to do it this way, because I can train someone to do the job. They could be the deputy clerk without being the elected clerk. You could decide to make Michael Vivret the town clerk, you know, somebody who's a resident.
I see.
Could be the token clerk, or, you know, sign papers and you...
I see, okay.
But if you decided that this is the way you wanted to go, is the same way, which I would recommend, then you would, once I resign, I will put in the advertisement, you know, residency preferred in Fairfax, you know?
Yeah, okay.
And then hopefully, the person that is selected would be a resident, you would have the option to appoint them to complete my term. That was all part of my reasoning, which I didn't spell out here, but I think the important thing is to have somebody trained to do these things and hopefully be a resident. So that gives you that option.
Okay, I didn't realize there was a preference for residency.
But what I'm saying with, working with your new town manager, I'm thinking, you know, Michael Rock had talked about having the town clerk be appointed and, no, elected, but be like our town treasurer, where they paid a certain amount of money, and they come in and sign papers, but they wouldn't actually do the job. And if that's something that you wanted to pursue, you could do that with this position, too. But meanwhile, you've trained someone to do the actual tasks involved.
Yeah, and I, again, I...
But it gives you more flexibility after that, you know, what you want, where you want to go forward from there.
So can we advertise this with the residence, Fairfax residence preference?
Preferred, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And the other thing is, didn't you work for Carl Shapiro, who's never retired? And you're deviating, you're deviating from the path.
I know. He's my role model in many ways, but I'm not going to go with the retirement thing, no.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out.
Absolutely.
Well, do I hear a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, public comment on this. Anybody have something to say? Tony?
Tony Utes, 740, for us terrorists in Fairfax. Judy, I'm going to hate to see you go. You've been here a long time, you know, you're like part of Fairfax. Well, I wish you a good retirement after. All right.
So do we need a motion, or is this direction, do we need a motion?
I'll make the free call. Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion for approval on a second, sorry, Bragman, Hartwell?
With local residency.
With local residency preference, yes. Wholeheartedly, and there's no way we can hope to replace you. So all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, there you go. And now we review council committee assignments.
I just wanted to say one thing. I put like a little PS at the end here, add Ross Valley Policy Advisory Group, but actually, there's no need for an assignment there. This is a once-a-year meeting that Supervisor Rice wants to have about policy, about the whole watershed, and you're already going to the meeting, John?
Well, I was going to go to this meeting, yeah.
On the 18th?
On the 18th, yes.
Yeah, and I was told that other people can attend if they want to, so, but if you're going and representing the group, that's great, yeah. But it isn't, it doesn't have to be part of your assignments. So I just... But it isn't, it doesn't have to be part of your assignments. So I just want to make that clear.
Good. The list is long enough anyway.
Your list is long enough, yeah. Okay. And I tried to, I put on the ones, I tried to change the ones, I think I got them all where the mayor serves in a certain position. So I've switched those around. But I haven't done anything to your regular assignments on the list, okay? So there might be some changes or additions or whatever.
Yes?
The, the change on mine would be that the, because the Affordable Housing Committee has kind of merged into the GPIC Committee, I believe we had discussed me becoming an alternate on the Affordable Housing Committee, so that if Larry wasn't able to make it, then I could go. And so I think that change, I think that change should be done officially here.
But we appointed people to the housing committee. We have a housing committee. Are we disbanding that committee?
Except it's evolved now, it's a subcommittee, it's been combined with the GPIC. And since I also am the council representative on the GPIC-
Okay.
When that body needs-
We haven't done anything officially to disband that.
Thing, then we have a Brown Act problem.
We advertised that, we appointed people.
It hasn't been disbanded, it's been sort of embraced. And maybe it hasn't been embraced, but maybe, was that a measure?
Well, you know, we need to bring the GPIC bylaws-
Right.
For approval to the council.
Maybe since it hasn't actually been officially embraced yet, that we don't make that change until it's been officially embraced.
Yeah, I mean, I'd prefer you stick on it. Because if we meet independently, then you and I could still meet.
Okay, all right, that's fine. That's good, that's good. Because my only other comment was, I still really firmly believe that the most active person in affordable housing, it would be really helpful if that person was also on the Community Development Block grant. So I'm happy to kind of-
Which is, and you are currently-
Which I am currently on. And it's just, it's all about getting money to affordable housing. Sometimes it feels like that merge.
Stick around.
So I'll stick around. All right, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, well, I will bring this, news of this conversation back to GPIC when we meet later on next week.
So are the two, to the, two members of the public are on that housing committee, or are now in GPIC as well? Is that what you're telling me? The whole committee is rolled into the GPIC?
Well, GPIC has proposed combining-
Okay.
The public housing committee.
Okay, but it hasn't really officially happened, right?
But that is, that's combined with their bylaws, which have not come, they aren't official, because they haven't come here.
Okay.
So-
All right.
That's a twist, that's a twist in the proposed new bylaws-
Because we appointed, you know, you as a body appointed members of that committee.
From the GPIC. But since we haven't approved that, it hasn't happened yet.
And it is not my understanding that that committee would be disbanded, so much as that committee would join into the GPIC.
These people we appointed.
Well, that's what was proposed, but we could mess with it.
I haven't seen them appointed.
Okay, so, is there any comment, public comment on this?
So we all stay, staying where we are?
I'm staying where I am.
Okay.
Good. Do you want more things?
Well, I mean, we've got four for all, we want to remain in Brownsville, fire, children, we need to help them. I want to, we have to show, sure, we do need these very, I love the school board's mind. Take something off my plate, and schools don't mind.
Yeah.
Well, I'm happy to continue on that at this point. But if there's something else that I've got you on.
I don't know, I'm okay.
All right?
Stand back.
Sounds good. All right, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a second.
Ooh, Larry beat you on that one. Okay, so-
So what is it?
Yeah, so Larry just moved to adjourn.
Okay.
Pam seconded it. Anybody in favor of that?
Aye.
All right. Great, terrific. Thank you very much.